Good evening. I call this Thursday, July 16th, 2020 Jefferson County Commission Meeting to Order. Commissioner Lorenzetti, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance place?
I'll try if you can hear me.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and I'm going to drop everything here. Could you all hear me? I think I lost you.
We can hear you, Mal.
We can hear you just fine.
Because everybody froze all of a sudden on me.
Oh, we're not frozen. But we'll finish the pledge with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to approval of minutes. We have three sets.
We have approval of minutes from June 15th, 2020. That's the 2020 primary election canvas.
Second.
Okay. We have any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving the June 15th, 2020, primary election canvas minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. June 18th, 2020, minutes.
I move to approve June 18th, 2020, regular session meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay. All right, the motion is before us. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the June 18th, 2020, regular meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. June 25th, special session minutes.
I'll move to approve the June 25th, special session minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the June 25th, special session meeting minutes. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say. Sorry?
Commissioner, quick thing. Just one note, the attendees, Jackie Shadle, our county clerk, was in attendance as well. I don't see her name reflected on there.
Oh, for the June 25th meeting? Okay, that's one thing. Yeah, I didn't look at. All right, I see what you're saying. Okay, so you're saying to amend the motion of approval to include Jackie Shadle, county clerk, in attendance, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Was that the approval of the canvas?
That was the second canvas for the statewide.
Yeah, I don't think she was there.
She said, I thought she said, she mentioned she was there, that's why I.
Okay.
I thought that was.
He didn't present at the meeting, but maybe she wasn't there, but I was pretty sure she wasn't. But we'll check and make sure. And if she was, we'll add it.
Okay, so the motion before us, if I can paraphrase, is, that's okay. Approve the June 25th, special session meeting minutes with the addition of Jackie Shadle should reviewing the video reveal that she was indeed in attendance. All those in favor, say aye. Caleb, I can't quite hear you, so if you can speak up a little louder, I appreciate it when we vote. Okay, anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to approval of requisitions.
I'll move approval of the requisitions dated July 16th and the amount of $62,348.35.
Second.
You have any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor of approving requisitions for July 16th, 2020, the stated amount, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Accounts payable for June 25th.
I move to approve accounts payable for June 25th, 2020, in the amount of $471,592.6.
Second.
Okay. Motion before us to approve accounts payable for June 25th, 2020. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Moving on to July 2nd, 2020, accounts payable.
I move to approve July 2nd, 2020, accounts payable in the amount of $1,117,625.47.
Second.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or discussion on that motion? I'll just add, it is a large amount, but that is like the beginning of our fiscal year and we're doing distributions to some of our component agencies plus the normal beginning of the fiscal year expenses. The motion before us is approval of accounts payable for July 2nd, 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. July 9th, accounts payable.
I'll move to approve accounts payable for July 9th, and I believe the sum is $242,045.38.
I'll second that. Do we have any questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving accounts payable July 9th, 2020, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. July 16th, accounts payable.
I'll move approval of the accounts payable for July 16th and the amount of $362,784.36.
Was that a second that I heard?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All righty. Any questions or discussion on accounts payable? The motion before us is to approve accounts payable for July 16th, 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now we're moving down to the approval of manual checks, June 26th.
I move to approve manual checks for June 26th, 2020, in the amount of $16,265.
I'll second that. Have any questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving manual checks, June 26th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. July 3rd, manual checks.
I'll move approval of manual checks for July 3rd in the amount of $8,766.54.
Second.
Okay. Have any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor of approving manual checks for July 3rd, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Manual checks, July 10th, 2020.
I'll move to approve manual checks of July 10th in the amount of $7,608.54.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving manual checks for July 10th, 2020, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Manual checks, July 17th, 2020.
I move to approve manual checks, July 17th, 2020, in the amount of $303,572.12.
I'll second that. Questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving manual checks for July 17th, 2020, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now, last one. Approval of payroll.
I'll move approval of payroll for July 9th in the amount of $271,636.70.
I'll second.
Okay. Questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor of approving payroll for July 9th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Grove, will you have any announcements or changes to our agenda?
I do. The clerk of the county commission has reflected that we scheduled the resolution for Jill McJackie for this meeting, but then for whatever reason, she ended up not being in the office this week, so we'll have to move that to another meeting.
Oh, so item number two, we can take off. All right.
Any other announcements? So I guess it's public comment next.
Yes, public comment is next.
So I did receive from the info line, some public comment on the solar farms, and then we received one comment that was definitely like, this is supposed to be public comment. We always include that stuff in the agenda in the next meeting under correspondence and indicate that we, you know, that it was info that we received. But I didn't know if you wanted me to read the solar farm comment that we got as part of public comment. And also, I mean, we have some, we can also provide, of course, the in-person or the meeting option for people to raise their hand and provide public comments.
I received a copy of that submitted info comment on the solar farm thing, so to me, that's just like emailing me unless I'm misunderstanding the situation. So I hope all the other commissioners have also received that.
We send all of the comments we receive out to all of the, so whenever we receive info that's pertinent to all the county commissioners, we send it to you and we also put it in our agenda packet for the next meeting, so it will be.
Okay. I think we ought to continue with that practice, because cumbersome as this is at times. Now, I know you have one submitted public comment, and do we have anyone on the line or waiting to make public comment?
No, I haven't done that yet, but I did receive a, I did receive an email today that was, hey, this is for public comment.
Okay, well, why don't you read that and then hopefully the public will raise their hand if they want to make public comment.
Okay, so let me just, for those of you, for our public who's attending as attendees, there's a little raise your hand icon, so you have the opportunity to make public comment. If you just click on that raise your hand icon, you can make public comment in person here during the meeting. So if you're interested in making public comment now, please raise your hand and I will call on you to make public comment. I'll read this one and then if you would like to do that, you can. So there's a little raise your hand icon, it lets me know you want to make public comment, and I can call on you and unmute you to provide that comment. That's one of the reasons we chose this format for the meeting, is that allows that type of public comment. So if you're interested, please feel free, raise your hand and I'll call on you. So I'll go ahead and read the one that we received, and then if anyone else wants to make public comment, just raise your hand and let me know. And you just click on the little hand icon, that's what I mean by raise your hand. All right, this is a public comment we received today from Mr. David Tab, and I'm going to read it. I, David Tab, a lifelong resident slash taxpayer, protest the Jefferson County Commission, JCC, hindering residents slash taxpayers from recorded public comment. It is time to reopen the meetings for public comment or stop making decisions that affect the resident slash taxpayer of this county. Such appointments, purchases, projects, new and old, permits, studies on any or any non-essential approvals and/or actions. It appears the JCC and the Jefferson County Administrator have yet to release the FOIA of the 12 proposal slash bids connected to the proposed courthouse complex. It appears the JCC has failed to sit properly for the approval of minutes since March 17th, 2020. If the JCC was not sitting properly for a few minutes, then the commission was not proper to hold a meeting. The approval of manual checks is just wrong. If you have a budget, just stick to it. Public comment. It appears the complete agenda packet was not sent this time. Agenda number five, Neil McLaughlin, JCDI, introduction of Dennis Jarvis. We are still under a pandemic and only essential services are required. The JCDI is not essential. Wasn't there a hiring freeze and financial crisis at hand? Agenda number six, Jennifer Myers, JC Parks and Recs Commission, updated budget COVID-19. If the public can't use the Parks and Recs, you should be pulling the plug and there should be no cost. Again, this is not essential. Agenda item number seven, request field trailer on county property. What is the project? Why is an office trailer needed and who is the project for? No action can be taken without public knowledge for such a request. Agenda number 10, Santa Barbara Attorney, notice of hearing. Without a hearing in person, no solar energy facility cannot move forward. We are still in a pandemic. Agenda number 11, FOIA, Department of Public Safety, hearing. Overview of text amendment ZTA 19-03, stormwater management ordinance, public hearing request under West Virginia Code 8A78. This hearing requirement is to include in-person participation. If this cannot be accomplished or accommodated due to COVID-19, this need to be put on hold until after the pandemic or until it can be. Agenda item number 12, Cochran, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, agenda number 19P69. Attorney Riddle was pressured by the local and state government to resign from this case. Again, hindering my challenge against the local and state governments and cue the county commission to put sanctions on me, denying me my constitutional rights in infringement. Agenda number 14, request an increase for a solid waste transfer station in the city of possible Burt Industrial Park. What would be the financial benefit to build a new location where there is already one? Correspondence information. Layoff at the Hollywood Casino at the Trousant Plaza, this is not the only layoff and/or businesses downsizing or completely gone. It is hard to be safe with the current county commission at this time. Have a nice day. Okay, and it looks like we do have some people who raised their hand.
Oh, good.
Excited. So I'm going to go down and I'm just going to go, my list is in order, so I'm going to go ahead and just go in, or in alphabetical order, so I'm going to go ahead and call on the individuals as they appear in my list.
Okay.
So the first one is Catherine Jawswick. I need to, you are self-muted and I have unmuted you, but you need to unmute yourself, Ms. Jawswick.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. I was also one of those citizens who sent a message to the info. In your agenda, it is not clear that these won't be read as comments during the public period. So anyhow, I did send this, but I wanted it read during public comments, so I'll go now. First of all, let me say that I fully support the development and implementation of alternative energy sources, including solar and wind facilities. However, such power generating facilities must be developed responsibly, particularly for large industrial facilities like the one proposed for rural areas in Jefferson County and the subject of the Planning Commission's proposed zoning ordinance amendment. The Planning Commission drafted this amendment in subcommittee meetings that were not open to the public, even though interest was expressed by Jefferson County residents. Additionally, after the amendment was presented to the entire Planning Commission, the Planning Commission further circumvented and suppressed meaningful public comment and consideration of the amendment. Substantial changes were made to the proposed amendment at the June 23rd Planning Commission meeting, but no Planning Commission hearing was scheduled on the drastically revised amendment. There are many potential problems with the zoning ordinance amendment that would make this massive commercial solar facility possible in our county. I respectfully request that the county commission reject consideration of the proposed amendment and send it back to the Planning Commission for appropriate public comment and consideration. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jawswick.
Okay, our next individual is Christine Wymer. Let me, I think I need to. All right, you should be good to go, Chris. I can hear you, yes.
All right. I would like to echo Dr. Jawswick's comments. I am uncomfortable with the procedure that got us to the zoning ordinance text amendment ZTA 1903 being before the Jefferson County Commission. Specifically, I'm uncomfortable with the meetings that led to the writing of the ordinance. It says specifically on the website of the West Virginia Ethics Commission, under the Open Government Meetings Act, under the covered agencies and meetings, under, is, a meeting covered by the act is a convening of a quorum of governing, of a governing body or committee in order to make a decision or deliberation towards a decision. Meetings may be held telephonically, and then it goes through other ways they can be held, but it says, in these instances, governing bodies must ensure that all members can hear, be, and be heard by each other, any media, or members of the public present at the meeting. When a quorum of a governing body discusses issues of interest upon which the governing body expects to take some official action, then this is a meeting. If discussion, if discussion takes place outside the confines of a public meeting, whether in person, by telephone, email, or other telecommunications meetings, it is an illegal meeting. And then if you go down further under frequently asked questions, the first question is, are committee meetings subject to open meetings acts? Do committee meetings need to be noticed? And the answer from the Ethics Commission is yes. All subunits of a governing body, regardless of size, must follow the open meetings act. This includes regular, standing, and ad hoc committees. Therefore, the committee that wrote the ordinance, the text amendments to the ordinance, should have been noticed appropriately and should have been open to the public. Simply releasing minutes is not sufficient. Any meeting where a decision is made, like writing a text amendment, cannot be close to the public and doing so is illegal according to the open meetings act. I ask that you send back this proposed text amendment to the commission and have them start the process over again with an open process to the public. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your comments.
All right, our next person is Daniel Chiottos.
Okay. Mr. Chiotto, go ahead, or if that's close.
Okay, unmuted. All right, so my name is Danny Shodis. I live here in Charlestown, longtime West Virginian. I work in the solar industry. I work for Mountain View Solar, although I am here representing myself. I'm a NAPSET PV technical sales professional. Usually I work on small projects. This one is a large project. So we're in a situation where we need to build out renewable energy. Behind the meter, solar panels on houses, small solar facilities are good. I love it, that's what I do. That's not going to cut it. That's not going to cut it to get to where we need to be to do something about climate change. It's the large facilities that deliver the more affordable energy. It's large facilities that make a huge impact in generation, generating clean renewable energy. And for me, I'm glad to see significant solar facilities proposed here in Jefferson County. If you look on PJM or Electric Grid, their interconnection queue, you can see if you add them all up, about 271 and a half megawatts proposed for Jefferson County, and I'm glad to see that. Now, a huge thing for solar development is making sure there's a clear, consistent, good process. I'm not a huge fan of a case-by-case approval. I like, and I prefer, one set of zoning policies that all projects follow, and I think it's important to get it right from the beginning so that as those facilities are built out, they're done right, and they're done in a way that's accountable to people in Jefferson County. I think there's significant opportunity to, and I'm not a zoning expert, so I defer to folks who are, I'm not an expert on policy setting in terms of the policies that got us here and the process that got us here, so I defer to folks who are. But good zoning would look like good setbacks, good buffer zones, good view shed protection, that can be done. Solar panels are generally 10 to 20 feet tall, it's not hard to hide them. Goods during stormwater management protections. Solar panels, they don't pollute like a polluting facility, industrial facility, rain, they're all from their self-contained units. Active encouragement of pollinator planting and co-locating agriculture. I think that active piece, a little bit more than what's in the current language, is important so that it can actually happen, but active encouragement of pollinator planting is key. I think a public hearing, at least on the zoning draft, is important so that it, so that as solar is built out in our county, it's done. And generally, I want to avoid solar being singled out. I've seen a lot of comments online where solar seems to be singled out because it's a clean energy, that it needs to be better than everything else or have special treatment beyond everything else for how much can be recycled, how much, you know, et cetera. So I want to see solar comply by the guidelines, I want to see solar develop, and I want to see the policies set right. We need large-scale solar development, we just need to make sure it's done right.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Next, Stephanie.
Next, we have Stephen Welch. Mr. Welch?
Good evening. Thank you for having us. As a private citizen, I just wanted to say that my family and I are very, very disappointed that this solar panel project is being considered. I'm absolutely against it for a variety of reasons, but I think my main concern is how we arrived at this point. It's been, sounds like it's been addressed partially with the previous comments, but a project of this size is going to have a major impact on folks that live in the area. And I'm just, I'm troubled and disappointed that this seems to have been developed, you know, almost under wraps, and it's frustrating. We moved partly, part of the reason why we moved to this area is to get away from, you know, fanciful ideas like this. At any rate, thank for, thank this meeting and appreciate listening to my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Hold on, I lost my, I lost my attendee list here. Jen Miller is our next person.
Okay.
Ms. Miller, it says you're self-muted, I have unmuted you.
Hello, my name is Jen Miller and I live in Avon Bend, out Cable Town Road, and I was just made aware of this solar farm industry that's being proposed, and it seems like, it came about very quickly, and I'm just concerned about the rezoning of agricultural land to solar industry, really. What I'm hearing is as many as 8,000 acres of agricultural. What I'm hearing is as many as 8,000 acres of agricultural land will be converted to solar energy, which I have nothing against solar or wind power. I think it's great, but I just wanted to voice my concern about the manner in which this has come about. And that's, that concludes my comment.
All right, thank you for making public comment.
That's our last person that had their hand raised, but I did receive a comment that my voice was muffled because I was shuffling papers, and I wasn't sure if that was when I was giving the instructions for public comments. So I just wanted to echo the procedure. If there's anyone left who would like to give public comment, you can use the raise-your-hand icon, and you can, if you raise your hand, I will unmute you, and you will be able to give public comment, just like we were in the County Commission meeting room. So if there's anyone who would, left who would like to give public comment, please click on that icon, and I will unmute.
Well, we're waiting just a few more, pardon, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying, we're waiting just a few seconds to see if anybody else raises their hand. I'm just looking at Ms., at our wording here on the agenda, and I can see how people might be confused on public comment from Dr. Jawswick's comment. Perhaps the second sentence should say, "Please submit written comments via email to info," as opposed to maybe the first line should have oral public comment. You know, whatever anybody thinks makes it clear would work for me, and if anybody else has any suggestions, I welcome that.
And I would say written com, well, we include, well, yeah, I think we'll say we will include written comments in the minutes and agenda correspondence, which will be for the next meeting, so I can change it to make it a little more clear.
Yeah. Do we have any, has anyone else raised their hand?
We haven't had anyone else. Wait, oh, there's a question here. So I do not have any other takers for raising your hand, but it was nice to see that, and we did use this during our town hall with Dr. Reedy, and that worked as well, so nice to have people use the format to make public comment.
Yes.
But I don't have anyone, anyone else.
Okay, I'm very glad to see folks taking, participating in this manner, as cumbersome as it is at times. We're, we're moving ahead, and we're taking care of county business.
Hold on one second. I just got a question from someone who said they would like to ask a question, so let me see if I can find her in the list here. I'm sorry.
Well, and just inform them, make public comment. We do not answer questions.
Right. Yeah, so if you would like to make public comment with your question, it's Ms. Hellman, and I have unmuted you if you would like to, if you're interested in making public comment. Yeah, she said she would like to make a comment. So Ms. Hellman, you need to unmute yourself. It says you're self-muted, so I've unmuted you, so you just need to unmute yourself if you'd like to make public comment. It still says she's self-muted.
Okay.
Let me see.
I don't know what else to do. I'm, I'm assuming she can hear us, so she needs to...
She can, because she just sent me a comment in response to what I was saying.
So, okay.
I'm gonna, I'm just going to send her a message. Okay, she said she would type it, so if you type it to me, I will read it for you. So we'll go ahead with the agenda, and then we can go back, and I can read that comment if you want to type it to me, like you've been sending me the questions, Ms. Hellman.
Okay.
Okay, she said, so she got that, she's, she is hearing us, even if we can't hear her, so we'll go back. When I get her comment, I'll come back and let you know to read it.
Okay, all right. Any way we can do this to make it work. All righty. We will move on to Agenda Item Number One, which would be with our assessor, Ms. Angie Banks, and I believe she has some exonerations to present to us.
I have two exonerations. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, the first one is in our 2019 Personal Property Book, Charlestown District. Taxpayer filed a vehicle they no longer had July 1, 2018. Assess value 1,200, tax amount $27.83. Applicant is Sandra Biggs, ticket number 300717.
All right, I move we approve exoneration as outlined by the assessor, ticket number
Second.
Okay, the motion before us is to approve the exoneration for ticket number 300717 as presented by the assessor. Do we have any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think maybe some, but maybe that's just us commissioners rustling around with our papers, so I've heard some different noises. Go ahead, Ms. Banks.
Yes, I have one more. It's in our 2020 Personal Property Book, Harper's Ferry District. The 2000 KSO was traded in for a leased vehicle, so they did not own it July 1, 2019. Tax amount is $95.60, assessed value 4,200. Applicant is Julie Miller, ticket number 308416.
I move that we approve the exoneration for ticket number 308416 as presented by the assessor.
I'll second that. The motion before us is approve the exoneration for ticket number 308416 as presented by the assessor. Do we have any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Jane, this is Ralph. Oh, go ahead. Uh, nothing on those, but I just wanted to comment that the emails I had received on exoneration said the exonerations were included, and for some reason they were not. It's not a major thing, but this next time, could they make sure that they are attached to them?
Right, I, I had the same problem, and just did get them sent out to me because I alerted her to the problem, but apparently, when she forwarded things, the attachment didn't come with it, so. But we need to vote on that last exoneration. I don't think we did.
No, we didn't.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving exoneration for ticket number 308416, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks.
Commissioner Tab, I have Ms. Hellman's comment now, if you wanted to go back and have me read that.
Yes, let's go ahead and take care of that.
Okay. Her comment is, "I just need to express how disappointed I am and disturbed to hear that, oh, sorry, the Jefferson County Commission thought it appropriate to pass issues without public comment before today, after the fact, when the citizens have made it eminently clear that we expect to be informed and have input on issues that will affect our county." And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hellman, for your public comment. Agenda Item Number Two from Jackie Shadle, the resolution for Gail McGackey's been taken off the agenda, correct, Stephanie?
That, that is correct.
Okay, so we're moving on to Agenda Item Number Three with the sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you're there. Okay, good. Go ahead, please.
Mrs. Commission, I'm here this evening, or virtually with you this evening, about a position in the sheriff's office. The Civil Service Commission provided testing last, late last year. In that testing, we received those test results. We did extensive background investigations on applicants. We have interviewed the top three applicants per the Civil Service Code, and as a result of that, I'm asking that Micah Hutchins be appointed as a deputy sheriff. He's fully certified in West Virginia. He was clearly a, would be a good candidate at any time, but we're very fortunate because he came with excellent recommendations and training, and the good part is, we don't have to worry about sending him to the academy to get trained, and so we expect within a short period of time, with a field training officer, he'll be, be fully ready to operate on the road. As I told the commission before, I do expect, and we already have one deputy who is to go to the FBI Academy next month. We will have another vacancy here in the near future, and so I hope to be back before too long to, to fix that. So, members of the commission, I'd request that Micah Hutchins be approved as a deputy sheriff in Jefferson County effective August 2, 2020. And if, if you want or need, the pay schedule for that position is $47,833.
Okay, and you know my usual question. I assume this is budget neutral.
This is already in the budget, and the first month of that budget period, there will be no cost of that position, so it's actually, we're, we're good budgetarily.
I'll make the motion that Micah Hutchins be employed as a deputy with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office effective August 2, 2020. Salary, per the pay schedule for his salary will be $47,833. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving the employment of Micah Hutchins in the sheriff's department, say aye.
You probably didn't hear me, Jane. I, I had to unmute myself.
Okay.
I said aye.
Yeah, I'm trying to wait and listen and not rush ahead, but I do tend to rush ahead.
My fingers aren't as fast as I thought.
Any opposition? Any nays? Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Mrs. Commission, if I also could just give you a heads up, if you have not been on the, the tax office website, I would encourage you to go to it because it's now been revised and improved. If you go on there now, it'll show you your property description. It'll even show you your neighborhood, so you can check on all your neighbors and see what their property is and what their taxes are and so on as well, and it even gives you a picture. So I think this is something that we've been trying to get done for a while, but it'll now, now come into play. The other is that we, we will, we've already begun the process, and hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we will have the ability, not only as we've had for a while, to pay remotely, but we will also have the ability for people, when they come to the office, to pay at the office with, with credit card or pay electronically as well. So that's something we've wanted to do for a while. It got slowed down with the, with the COVID process going on, but the equipment's already on its way, and once it gets in, it's a very short process to, to get it done, so we're, we're hoping that within the next two weeks, we'll have that. We're also going to put that into the law enforcement office, so when people are coming in, sometimes they want to get copies of their crash reports. They want to, you know, pay for their permits, et cetera. We'll be able to do that there as well, which we think will be a great convenience. So anyhow, I just wanted to let you know, those improvements are coming to the office. And, and, and on the negative, I want to tell you that unfortunately, last month, we had the highest number of overdose, that we had 41 overdoses last month, including four deaths, and, and we appear, appear to have had two overdose deaths last night. And nationally, we're getting a lot of information that the overdose problem is, is, if not worse, it's certainly not getting any better in the COVID environment.
Yeah, I think we all were afraid of that, and I'm sorry to see it's proving to be true.
Jane, I have a question for the sheriff.
Sure, go ahead.
The last two weeks, I've gone by the, the old tax office, and I've, both times, I've found somebody there trying to read and figure out where it is, and I give them a direction where they go. I, I, I don't know how he would, but is there any, any other way we can make people know that they just need to go around the corner?
Well, we'll check to see whether the signage, or there should be signage, was supposed to be signage up there that, that said how to, you know, where you would go to, to get to, get to the tax office, but we'll, we'll check that out.
You may need to underline it with, I think it is there, but maybe you'd underline it with red or something. I don't know.
Well, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yes, I noticed the improvements on the, when you go to check taxes and so forth, and that you could click under the, it says RE Info, I think, and you can get the parcel map and all sorts of information. I was checking on my own, not being a nosy neighbor, but just wanted to let you know.
Well, the very good part about that system is, is occasionally, because it's all personally inputted, that what it'll do, and I'm, I'm, I have a conservatorship that I'm, I'm working right now with a fairly new appointment, and, and the address of that was, it was, I will give you a specific number because I don't want people to know, but the, the number was transposed, the first and third number transposed, but when you go and click on it, and it gives you the physical mapping, it gives you the correct address. So even though incorrect in the system, when you click on it, it corrects it. So the good part for us is it now gives us another mechanism to go back and, and make sure. I mean, it wasn't that the person wasn't getting their, their mailing and so on from us, but it also fixes that problem as well, so it's a great, great advantage.
Okay, thank you very much. Stephanie, is Ms. Eddy on the line?
She, she is. Let me find her here. There she is.
Good evening, Rhonda.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well.
Good, good. Well, just after the beginning of the year, I advised the board of my desire to transition out of the executive director's position towards retirement, and they created a work group and did some very comprehensive recruitment and interviewing, and selected Kelly Franklin at the June meeting, and she started as the executive director on July 1. She's been working at the Day Report Center for close to three years, and she has a lot of experience and background, certainly a broad educational background.
Rhonda, we can barely hear you. Try, try that again.
Okay. Former regional director for Pro and Probation Services, and her experience and background closely aligns with the work that we do, the goals and mission of the Jefferson Day Report Center. So I'm extremely grateful that Kelly was willing to take on this challenge and plan to stay and support her as long as she, she needs me and is comfortable in the, in the world. Also, in it, to further support Kelly in the executive director position, we created another position of the Community Engagement and Economic Development Director, and John Unger accepted that position in March, and he's been working closely with us in ways that we can build, continue to build program sustainability, and also have a broader reach with what we do as a nonprofit organization. Something, because of the COVID-19, I wanted to let the Something because of the COVID-19, I wanted to let the commission know that our services have maintained at the same level, if not more. Because we had so much experience with telehealth, we we didn't miss a beat. Our patients are still being seen. In fact, you're seeing them more often. We're looking at creative ways to continue to help support these folks. In fact, Kelly is working with a drug testing company for remote drug testing, where individuals can be tested in the home, in the privacy and safety of their homes. And their specimen will be authenticated by their DNA. So there's a lot of creative things that are going on in telehealth. And a lot of these ta testing labs are working on new methods for people to test in at home. I'm sure we'll be able to do some of that as well. I know we're seeing our doctors by telehealth. So I'm I'm confident that Kelly is going to continue to build the program. And she has a lot of experience and a lot of innovative ideas that I'm sure she's going to put together a presentation and and talk to you about some of them. One thing we are doing, and we were able to expand because of the COVID-19, is we have a statewide virtual DUI safety and treatment program. So we're providing services to people in over 27 counties now, even as far south as Lincoln County. But I would like to end by thanking the county commission for their support of the program over the past six years that that I've led the program. And I'm grateful that you had confidence in me and allowed me to serve in that way.
Well, I I wanted to personally thank you for your leadership. And you've just done amazing things here in Jefferson County and really set an example for many others to follow. And now I'm amazed how far your, what was that DUI training and so forth?
Yes, the DUI safety and treatment program that's required for people to get their driver's license back.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's amazing. And I just hope that anybody that wants to take advantage of that can if they. I think for many people, the biggest problem will be internet adequate internet access. But I'm hoping you're not running into that problem.
And I'll mention that we offer the indigent program. So if they are indigent in that program, first part of it is free for them. And if they need more than what's, you're assessed that they need more than the initial phase, then their insurance will pay for the rest of it.
Well, I I want to wish you the very best, Rhonda. I mean, you initiated this preparation. This has been your TV, and you've done fabulous job. And I'm proud of the work you've done. To well-deserved rest, and I hope that we ever have it.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
I sure.
I I think Jefferson County can be pretty proud statewide of the program that we have. And we we're pretty well-recognized throughout the state.
That's pretty awesome. Thank you.
I would just like to add my congratulations and thank you. Thank you to Rhonda, too. It's Ralph.
Okay.
I echo everybody else. This is Josh. Enjoy retirement.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can get out of the house. You know, it's it's going to be difficult to to do the things that we were planning to do in retirement right now. Hopefully, Kelly will keep me busy until we can get out and travel some.
Commissioners, I see Ms. Franklin in the in the attendee list. I didn't know if she wanted to speak, but I will unmute her if she does.
Okay.
As I get down to her name here. So Ms. Franklin, I've unmuted you. I just saw that your name was in the list. You're certainly not required to make any public comment or any comments in the commission. But if you did, I just wanted to give you the opportunity. Ms. Franklin?
She may not be able to hear you.
Yeah, it's.
Can you hear me now, maybe?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Kelly Franklin. I just want to thank Rhonda for those words and also the the commission, the Criminal Justice Board, for having confidence in me to take over. I have some things in the works right now, and I hope to continue. And I hope that the program grows, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. And we look forward to meeting you in person someday soon, hopefully. Yes, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Well, Ben, this is Patsy, and I just want to say best wishes, and you have a great teacher. So I know you're going to do great.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Thank you, Rhonda, and enjoy that retirement.
Okay, I plan on.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're back. We're moving on to item number five. Mr. McLaughlin and/or Lynn Goodman.
So Lynn Goodman is here. I thought I saw Neil on here, but I don't see his name anymore. So maybe he's in the attendee list, but I do see Lynn on there.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce our new executive director for the Jefferson County Development Authority, Dennis Jarvis. He is a native of West Virginia, and he comes to us from Henderson, North Carolina. He has more than 20 years of economic and community development experience. He started with the JCDAs on July 6th, so he's been on the job not quite two weeks so far. But in that short time, we've been busy catching him up on what the JCDAs has been doing for the past year and introducing him to community officials, as well as some county and municipal leaders and local and regional business and development folks. So far, we have several meetings the past two weeks, and his schedule for the next month is pretty full already. Having served as the interim director for the past year, I can't tell you how happy I am to have him on board. Dennis is online, and he can tell you himself.
All right.
Is it okay to speak? Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Good.
Oh, fantastic. And yes, I want to thank, excuse me, first and foremost, I want to thank the JCDAs Board of Directors and the current staff, Lynn and Jane, they're fantastic. And whomever was fortunate to be the new director, transitioning rather smoothly. And as Lynn alluded to, I've only been here two weeks, but it feels like I've been here several weeks because the transition has been seamless coming into the county and being in the county the last two weeks. It's been fantastic. I had the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Tab this week and our county administrator. We've met with a mayor and the city manager of Charlestown, the mayor of Shepherdstown, and a host of others, Bill Clark with Region 9 and Director of the Chamber of Commerce and what have you. But we're moving along rather quickly, more so than I anticipated. We had a great meeting yesterday with a site selector who is representing a property in the county and industrial park. And we're working rather earnestly. And we'll have after our board meeting next week, before a board meeting, too. A strategic planning session is moving forward. There was almost 1,000 recipients for the survey, the county survey. It's a shade under 1,000. It's like 992. Roughly, that's almost 2% or so of the county. And we are about to complete the process, and we'll begin the formation with the board on the final product. And I know we'll be coming to you hopefully last quarter of the year, maybe first quarter of next year at the latest, that we unveil the public, the public input, the the board's input, and we talk about implementation plan for the next 36-plus months. And look how we're going to direct the initiative, work with county leaders, work with community leaders. Be a very synergistic group, so and I'm much appreciative so far of being here.
Well, thank you, Dennis. And I enjoyed our meeting this week and look forward to working with you and seeing what new things developed at the Development Authority. I think you have a great board to work with, and there's just exciting things to look ahead to.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just glad to, I'm glad to be back home in the mountain state and be a part of the most progressive, bucolic pastoral setting in the state. And, you know, we're a tourism engine, and we're going to be some engine for some other other initiatives and a catalyst for dynamic change. And I'm just dagum pleased to be back.
Okay. Other commissioners wish to make any comments?
No, this is Patsy. He's heard from me before, and we're just really happy to have him at the Development Authority.
This is Josh. I just want to welcome you, Dennis, to the county. We'll meet in person hopefully soon, but again, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Jarvis and Lynn Goodman. And thank you, Lynn, for holding down the fort for a year. I know the situation was not easy, and you handled it with grace and superior management, and I really do appreciate it. And I'm sure Roger will be happy now, maybe that you you're, there's not such a heavy load on your shoulders. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, commissioners, are you ready to move on to item number six?
Yep.
All right, we have Jennifer Myers on the line from Parks and Rec. Oh, okay.
We have Paul Marshall.
Okay. I see Mr. Hill.
I do not see Jennifer.
Let's see where she at.
Let me check my attendee list and see if she's there.
Yeah, let's see her on the list.
She's in the attendee, so I'm going to elevate her rights right now. Okay. So she should be now. Okay. Okay, now she's here. She is here. She was on. And now she's sharing her screen.
Okay.
Sorry. Wrong link to get in.
That's okay. It works.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. So Dave Hill, who is our current treasurer, is joining us as well. And we just wanted to give you guys, you know, kind of a brief overview of of the status of Parks and Rec right now. As you can imagine, COVID has had a fairly negative effect on on our, you know, programming that we that we do in the parks. The rec center was shut down for close to three months when the governor shut down rec centers in the state. We were, you know, part of that, and we weren't able to open or run any any programs. So we have, in the past month, have reopened the doors to the community, you know, with all the the requirements that the state has put out and are starting to slowly but surely kind of get get our feet back under ourselves a little bit with with some programming. We were able to run a few summer camps that are underway currently. And we're hoping to, you know, be able to continue to move forward in that direction, you know, over the next, over the rest of the year with no more, no more shutdowns or closures, hopefully. But we just wanted to go over the, some of the effects we had. I'm not sure, are you able to see my my screen, the PowerPoint?
I can.
Okay.
Yes.
And I and I also, I also sent this out to Stephanie earlier today. So if if you wanted to receive a copy, I'm sure that that she could send that out to you.
Thank you.
So as you can imagine, again, you know, we had a pretty, pretty huge hit with our programming losses when we were basically shut down and not able to run any programs for for close to four, four months. We lost, our our program losses were about $320,000. Facility rentals was $67,000, and of course, hotel motel taxes down as well, about $102,000. You know, when we had to shut down, we had to cancel any programs that were in process of running. Basically, our entire season, March, March through June, was canceled. So so that is why you're seeing such a huge program loss there this time of year is, you know, is when we bring in the biggest chunk of our of our program revenue, as well as hotel motel tax.
Yeah.
This is just a little breakdown again to show you our budget. We had budgeted $500,000 for programming revenue last fiscal year. And we came in at 179,000. And facility rentals, we had budgeted at 125 and came in at 57,000 for our for our actuals there. Again, typically, this time of year, the fourth quarter is the most important year, the most important quarter of Parks and Rec. With our summer programs coming onboard and camps, we start taking those registrations in February, March. And our park rentals are usually, you know, packed, packed full. You can't get it, you know, can't get a pavilion. And this year, obviously, it's a little bit different. This is just another chart to show you again, hotel motel tax. Last, last year, in FY19, the fourth quarter brought in $117,000 in hotel motel tax for us. This past fiscal year, '20, we brought in $30,000 for the hotel motel tax. As far as programming goes, kind of comparing summers to summer here, last summer, we offered 231 programs. This summer, as of right now, we are planning to offer 66. Our cancellation rate is fairly close. We've canceled about 12% right now. That that has gone up a little bit. We've ended up having to, we canceled five additional camps today. Last year, we served about 2,800 citizens in our summer camp program, and this year, it's about 378. So the revenue is where you see the the huge, the huge negative here. Last, last year, we brought in $226,000 in summer camp revenue. And this year, because of all of the refunds that we have to process from March through June, we are actually negative right now in our program revenue when we ended the year for the for the for the fourth quarter. We do want to make sure we point out a little bit of good, you know, it wasn't an awful fiscal year, even though COVID kind of in the room, you know, in the end up for us. But we did have a successful, you know, summer camp program. We did a lot of good things, kind of starting out last fiscal year. Overall, not just in our summer camps, but just summer programming in general, we served, you know, closer 4,000, you know, residents in Jefferson County. As you know, we opened the amphitheater last May, and we offered quite a few events at the amphitheater. We had free community concerts. We had military band concerts. Of course, the fireworks are have up, have been a drawl year after year. Last year, we were able to offer drummer camps. We had community play. So that that outdoor space, you know, was was hopping last summer. Where this year, you know, unfortunately, we can pretty much just have to look at the grass growing up around it. We were able to secure three, three grants last fiscal year, all of which would have been used this summer. The Levitt Foundation grant, which was a $25,000 grant we received to do a concert series, has actually been postponed to 2021. The Levitt Foundation has agreed to let us keep that grant, so we will not lose that. And we're able to move that to next, to next summer. We also received a Hermann Henderson Office of Minority Affairs grant for our Let's Play Mobile Recreation Program, which we had planned to roll out into the school system. And it free lunch sites across the county this summer, as well as libraries and in the cities, which we are, we are looking to try to get that started here within the next week or two, but we haven't been able to roll it out at this point, just with the restrictions. But that was a $17,000 grant we received. And then we also received a land and water conservation fund grant for $45,000, which is to build a new inclusive playground at James Hyde Park. which is to build a new inclusive playground at James Hyde Park. That project will continue. That grant is still available. And since we are using impact fee money to match, for the match, that program will actually continue and it should actually be installed next month. Um, so, you know, as, as the staff and the board kind of look forward, we know we need, we need to make some changes and figure out what's, what's next. Our mission will stay the same. You know, our goal is still to provide diverse year-round opportunities by creating and providing recreation, leisure and community service necessary to promote and improve the overall quality of life for citizens of Jefferson County, West Virginia. Now more than ever, residents are using the parks. I think that it's really important to have the parks open and available for mental and physical health. We have seen a drastic increase in park users. So we have really made every effort to try to have the parks open and have the parks available for the citizens to get out in social distance and get some fresh air during these times. Um, we are going to have to change our approach. I think, you know, in the past, we've always focused on best practices, but now instead, we need to focus on next practice. We are starting to offer virtual programming. Most of our programming going forward will have to be held in smaller groups. We are going to focus on mobile recreation and hopefully expand that into other community events and, you know, possibly even promotions of birthday parties and things like that with smaller groups. You know, we're constantly thinking at this point now, how can we bring the community together in this time of imperative distancing? I think going forward, outdoor activities are going to be paramount. You know, community events, classes, camps that we can do in outdoor spaces, such as the amphitheater, the pavilions, are the focus and not inside the community center. So as far as, as revenue, as far as kind of revenue and where we are at this point, just to let the commission know, we, we were able to pay, apply for an SBA loan and we were awarded that loan back in April in the amount of $129,000. And that loan enabled us to keep our full-time staff employed through, through this pandemic so far. And that loan will run out in mid-August. So we have spent, we have almost spent the, the budget with that and we had a certain amount of time that we have to use the money in. So that, that one's winding down. We also applied for funding through the CARES Act. Since we were closed for such a long period of time, we didn't have the expenses that other departments had with, with cleaning because we didn't have anyone in the building. We have been able to start ordering supplies and we have started using that to get some reimbursement. But at this point, it's only been about $2,200 reimbursement that's been approved. We will continue to, to request additional funds as we have expenditures related to COVID. Um, and then we were also made aware recently that there is an EIDL loan that is for, for nonprofit agencies. And since we do have our own 501(c)(3), we are looking into applying for that loan as well. So that application is actually underway. And the goal with that would be that we'd hopefully be able to cover staff, continue to cover staff costs to not have to, you know, hopefully make any hard decisions as far as our, our staff continues to go. Just to let you know, at this point in time, there are no part-time staff. The full-time staff is, is running the office. We don't have any front desk staff. There's no evening weekend staff. All of our full-time staff is managing all of those duties right now. And our, we have two full-time maintenance personnel. We do have three part-time seasonal staff that are working less than 24, less than 20 hours a week to, to try to just keep the grass mowed at this point. But any, any other project, any expenses, you know, we are sparingly using anything that we have to at this point. Um, so, you know, what we need from you, basically at this point, is we, we just want to give you a heads up that we, we will need your help at some point in the future. We are not going to be able to sustain as an organization operating with a third, the third budget loss. You know, the thing that we have heard over and over at this point from people calling, especially if we said something was closed, that they feel that parks are their right and they are not a luxury. So that is, that is a call we have received pretty frequently here over the last few months as, as we were trying to shut down spaces to, you know, not only protect citizens of the county, but, you know, also save, save money as we were able to. The public sanitation costs obviously have increased at this point. They're going to continue to rise until it just becomes the new norm. We completely agree with keeping everything safe and clean and we are doing our, our due diligence to make sure that that happens. But it is, it is a strain on the limited staff that we have and our budget is going to continue to take a hit as we have to buy more supplies to sustain this new normal. Um, you know, a lot of people in the county have, have lost jobs or are, you know, currently on unemployment or have had hours cut and we have seen an increase in residents calling and asking for assistance to do the, the little bit of programming that we've been able to offer. So we're very grateful that you, that you have provided the scholarship funds and those at this time of need have, have really been helpful to a lot of families that, you know, currently don't have the means to, to sign up for programs. So people are taking advantage of that and we really appreciate that from you. So, and I will turn it over to Dave, as I know he has a few comments he wants to add as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Make sure my audio is on here, right? Nothing worse than talking to your computer and talking back to yourself.
We can hear you.
Well, how many times I've done that in the past several months? You're muted. Thank you, Jennifer, and thank, I want to thank the commission. And just also, before I make a couple of comments here on our, on our status, State of the Union here is just thanks to the commission, thank Jennifer and, and the commission for Parks and Recs as well. We've had to make some tough decisions, as I know the county commission has. And collectively, working as a team, you know, picking up the, picking up the different responsibilities. The, the numbers aren't good. As Jennifer said, the numbers aren't good, but I tell you, they could have been worse. We, we made the good decisions. We, we pushed through the challenges. And overall, despite the numbers down, I'm pleased where we are. We're, we're, you know, we're not, we're not submerged, but the real, the real question is, is how are we going to move forward? And, and so today, we just want to give you, you know, yes, looking back, this is where we are. This is where we close the books. There's not a light switch that fixes it on July 1. But we, we really are reaching out to you today, say, hey, you know, we, we don't, we can't continue another year like this. It's not beneficial to the community and we have to adjust. We've got to adjust our facilities in order to let people also transition back in the workplace when that occurs and that's going to be different. One of the staple items of our programs is actually childcare. It was already beyond demand pre-COVID. And when, you know, parents and moms and dads go back to work, they're going to need a place that's safe and healthy and, and, you know, obviously the spacing for their children to come to programs and childcare. We need to prepare for those things. We need to get ready. Otherwise, they're, they're going to be restricted. I currently oversee a division for car construction. I have about 200 employees that I'm responsible for in my division, 150 to 200 million dollars in revenue. Some of the biggest struggles is getting people back to work or even transitioning back part-time into a new norm has been childcare and summer programs. We're also seeing, you know, their, their teenagers struggling with things they shouldn't be involved in because they're sitting idle. Okay, we just heard earlier tonight about, you know, those, those nasty things that, that are, you know, causing overdoses and addictions. So Parks and Recs is an essential, you know, part of life here in Jefferson County and it's a part of our wellness. So, you know, we're not going to solve that tonight. I just want to, I want to leave you, you know, with this thought to chew on because we're going to be back. We need, we need facilities. It's not just money we need. It's, it's really to work together to plan and utilize space, repurpose space, get creative so that we can provide, you know, the right resources to help people transition not only of COVID, but wherever that new norm lands and that we're ready for and we're not reactive to it, we're being proactive to it. So, again, I commend the team because we could have put our heads down and pouted. No one did that. I, I saw some of the salivating personnel on mowers out there mowing grass and taking on different responsibilities. So, you know, this is what it's about. I, I think we're going to be stronger because of this. I'm optimism. But we are going to need help and we're going to need, you know, to join our forces of leadership here to figure this out so that we can come out for the community. Because if you look at the numbers, you know, yes, we only had three, we had 300, you know, citizens served in some of our camps, but the previous season, we had thousands. Okay. Looking at the impact fees, houses are still getting built. Families are still moving here. This is still the place to grow, right? So we got some catching up to do because of COVID and we're going to need your help to figure out what that new grow looks like. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to Jennifer and the commission.
Um, did anyone have any specific questions about the presentation or, you know, where we are at this point?
You're on mute.
I just want to thank you for, for taking your time to come in, to give us an update and to let us see the numbers. You know, we all hope that we'll come out of this sooner rather than later, but don't count on it. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I said, you know, there's a, you, I know, I know, we all know that you've had tough times, especially for Parks and Rec with the hotel motel tax down and then not able to do programming. So, you know, I know there's going to have to be a lot of creative thinking in the future on ways to, you know, provide programming in some kind of childcare, especially once we know what the school system schedule is going to be. I mean, nobody quite knows yet what that's going to be and, you know, I have my daughter and son's family both, you know, they're working from home with kids and that is a challenge. So you love them, do they, love them, but man, it's really hard to put in eight, eight hours for the federal government, you know, if you're doing computer programming with two kids bopping around and then your husband trying to work too. So, yeah. We've all got some challenges before us and I know Parks and Rec is an important piece of our community. So thank you for your, your extraordinary efforts to keep things going.
Thank you. And I might add, I have one item here to add, you know, when Jennifer talked about the numbers and the loans and all, just, you know, I want to be clear, we also did look at local financing options of a line of credit. So, you know, just again, if we have to make major changes or renovations or adjustments, you know, we did go to BCT and get a quote and a proposal on a line of credit. Again, that's not the answer all. It was just a measure of saying, is this an option of an avenue we may have to take to invest or modify our program facilities? So that again, we can increase, be able to, be able to be poised if need be. It's certainly not a blank check. Obviously, that's money we'd have to pay back, okay? But we did look at that as an option. That's the least of our options, but that option is available if we have to do it. But that option is not an option for operating capital. That's not, you know, we do not want to do that. We want to have that as investment for anything we have to alter or modify so we can be positioned for the community. So, you know, full disclosure, we did, we did look at that, but again, that's not our most viable option.
All right, comments from other commissioners?
Yeah. First and foremost, I just want to commend the Parks and Rec Board, which I'm a liaison. I think Jennifer has done a great job as director there, sorting through this mess. From what Dave just said, I, I think Parks and Rec should come back to the county commission prior to making any decisions on a, a loan from a bank and using a park as collateral. I mean, we all know these parks benefit the community at, at the helm. So the county's in a bad spot too, generally financially. But before the Parks and Rec Board makes that kind of decision, I would say, from my perspective, come back to the county. Maybe we can provide a stopgap measure to make that not happen.
I appreciate that. Has, has the county solidified its budget for 2021? We have it.
We passed one, but I don't think it's reality now anymore. So we're trying to get our reimbursements through CARES and ACT and so that's a fluid situation.
We'll be sure to send them a late notice and a late fee, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, well, as soon as you do, please let us know because we're, we're on an interim budget and we're, we're some projections that make some sense out of this. We're, we're, we're a stable point of limbo. Okay.
I think we share your pain, yeah.
And again, if you guys have any space or anything you know of that's available that we can utilize, you know, any open warehouse space or something we could lease reasonably to move some childcare or get position for that, to have, you know, open space that would be safe, please let us know. Okay?
Well, did you check with the Development Authority?
We are, we are, we are going to, yes. So, see, you already told me about a place. I just asked and you just told me there's something available.
Well, I don't know if there's anything available, but there's, there is a possibility. Any other commissioners? Well, thank you both, Jennifer and Mr. Hill, for all your hard work. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. Ready to move on to our next agenda item?
Commissioner Tab, number seven, they actually found another place to place the trailer. This was on that FEMA property where they're building the, the bridge or the
Right.
Right, yeah.
Uh, but they found another location, so they didn't, no longer need our permission.
Okay, well, that's great because that's what I thought, looking at the map or said it's a FEMA property. They're not going to want you to put a trailer on it, so.
Yes, and we, if you recall, it took us some time to
It did.
Settle back, so.
Specifically, thanks Sandy for talking with those folks and being instrumental in their decision to move somewhere else. Because as you'll recall, we had a, a long, long process to get FEMA approval for the, the bridge. And I'm just thankful that we don't have to try to get approval for placement of a trailer.
Me too. Okay. So we're not that far behind now that we can skip number seven to go to agenda item number eight. Stephanie, is Lynn Fields on the line?
She is.
Okay.
She's appearing by phone, but she's here. Lynn?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Hello, everyone. So this, we're here for our quarterly review from the probate office to approve wills and estates that have been open since the last quarterly review in April and also to close estates that have met all of the requirements and the deadlines of the probate office.
And sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Fields, but we, I'm going to make the motion that we convene as the fiduciary review board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to convene as the fiduciary review board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, so I think you all have the list there or you should have the list of, of the estates that, that were ready to close. I don't know if you all have any questions about them without being able to actually see the, the accountings and the, and the waivers.
No, I looked at the, you emailed us the list, the list of them all and so, you know, I'm good with what I saw.
Okay.
Yeah, so am I. I reviewed them earlier and I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I saw them all, so I'm good as well.
All right. So, go ahead, Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, so can someone make a motion for me?
Well, I'll move that we approve the estates open, the estates closed, the account, the accountings and waivers of final settlement as presented on the lists from the probate office.
I'll second that. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Bye bye.
We're a few minutes early. Does anyone want to take a break since these are interviews and appointments? Five minute break and then come right back? Does that work with everyone?
That sounds good.
Okay. I'm not hearing anything. All right. All right. Five minute break. We'll be back.
Jane? I don't hear you. Did I, I may have muted her. Hold on. Okay. It says you're self muted, Jane.
Okay. Yeah, now I'm going.
I'm sorry. I had muted everyone that didn't mute themselves, um, so that we couldn't hear anything while we were taking a break. So.
Is everyone ready to go again?
I'm here.
All right.
Yep. President.
Okay. Good, good. We'll now go to, on to item number nine on our agenda. We've got a lot of interviews and appointments here. The first one is for the Summit Point Library Committee. And I believe we have one applicant, Kathy Burke. Is she available?
Hold on. Um, I do not see her on here. And I'm also, I'm unmuting Jessica Carroll, who's our assistant, um, because she handles boards and commissions and there's a lot of them. So she has said that we can, um, rely on her. Let me see if she, if she's in my attendee list over here.
Hey Stephanie, I'm here.
Hey, Jessica or Kathy?
Jessica.
Okay. Did you hear from Kathy Burke at all?
I am checking my email now. It looks like she sent me an email that said that she got the link, which I forwarded to her this morning, but nothing is happening when she clicks it. So short of being able to see her screen, I'm honestly not certain how to assist in this, uh, manner. But I do know that she wishes to be reappointed and that we also received correspondence from two others who are in support of her, um, reappointment. And that includes Dana Jenkins, who I believe is the director of the Summit Point, uh, library.
Do any commissioners have, uh, an issue with moving?
I see her. Sorry. It's under Catherine. That's my fault. I am so sorry. I have, Mrs. Burke, Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Okay. I'm so sorry. I missed you. I was looking for Kate. You raised your hand. Thank you for raising your hand.
Oh Kathy, we are still learning how to work all this stuff.
Aren't we all?
Yes, yes. So, um, you are the only person that has applied to serve again on the Summit Point Library Commission. And would you mind telling us why you want to serve again? You've been there a long time and I appreciate that. But what, what motivates you?
Oh, this has been a motivation that's been going on since before 1984. When we first started putting that library together, uh, there were, um, five of us. We did the bake sales and all of those things to build our first library, which was a small trailer. And we outgrew that as soon as we moved into it. And so 10 years later, we moved into the bigger library there in Summit Point. And, uh, I'm so, super proud of that library. And if you have not been out to visit, please. Some of the best employees and patrons around. Um, and of course, this virus thing's had an impact on how we've been able to serve the community too. But it's just been a passion of mine for all these years and I'd like to continue.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions of Ms. Burke?
No, I don't have any questions. She's obviously been there for a while. She's no, she's excellent. So I don't have any other questions.
Jane, no question for her.
Okay. I have, somebody wants to make a motion?
Well, I'll do it. I'll happy, I'm happy to move that we appoint Kathy Burke to the Summit Point Library, uh, Board for one five year term ending June 30th, 2025.
I'll second. Nope, it's been seconded. Uh, do we have any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of appointing Kathy Burke to the Summit Point Library Committee for a five year term ending June 30th, 2025, say aye.
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 Opposed? You are in, like Flynn unanimously. There you go.
I do want to say it's, it's the, it's the South Jefferson Book Library, not the Summit Point.
Okay, you're right.
Yeah, she's exactly right and I stand corrected. And I just really wanted to say that because of the library was established, what to name it. We didn't want it just to be exclusive to that little community of Summit Point. South Jefferson and the whole county. And we have people come there from all over. But I thank you all very much.
Okay.
And goodness, bless you for the work you do. Woo.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, um, Jefferson County Solid Waste Authority, uh, four year term, uh, one four year term. I believe we have one applicant, um, and that is William Weston. Does he happen to be on the phone or on Zoom or? This isn't Zoom. This is go to meeting, go to webinar. All right. Keep all this stuff.
I'm looking here. Let me see. Let me check both lists. I do not see him on the list. So that is, I realize that's of little consolation since I missed the last. Um, and Mr. Weston, if he's out here. Yeah.
Go ahead, Ralph.
I, I just want to make sure you can hear me because my microphone icon disappeared on me.
I can still hear you.
Yeah, you're good.
I don't have any way to mute myself now for some reason.
Okay.
Whatever.
All right.
Hey Stephanie, Stephanie, this is Josh. I'm a commissioner on that board. Uh, Mr. Weston does a great job. He's not missed a meeting since I've been on there for the past three years. So, I mean, I'll definitely support him for reappointment.
Is that a motion?
I will say.
Yes, I move. Yes, I move we reappoint Mr. Bill Weston to the Jefferson County Solid Waste Authority Board for one four-year term ending June 30th, 2024.
All right. And I'll second that motion. We have any questions or discussion? All those in favor of appointing Mr. William Weston to the Jefferson County Solid Waste Authority for the four-year term ending June 30th, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next on the list is the Harper's Ferry Bolivar Public Service District. I didn't see anyone in my packet that had applied for that. And I don't even know.
Neither.
Who is currently serving. Jessica or Stephanie, do you have any information on that?
Yes. Hold on just a second. Yeah, I don't see anyone listed on the agenda who, who had applied for that.
No, I, I don't either. And like I say, I don't even know who's on it now. So I guess that needs to be re-advertized and hopefully we'll come up with somebody or find out who is currently serving and ask them to continue if they so desire. All right, I'll move on if I don't hear any objections. I call this Region Nine, but the Eastern Panhandle Regional Planning and Development Council.
Commissioners.
Yes. Was that Jessica?
It was. I think they're getting a, they were getting a storm in Shepherdstown, so I'm, yeah. Jeff?
Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Go ahead, Jessica.
I think there's.
She's saying now.
Yeah. Yeah.
But David Simmons was the applicant, or I'm sorry, the serving member for the Harper's Ferry Bolivar PSC.
Okay. Thank you.
And did he want to be reappointed, Jess?
I have not heard from him via email or phone throughout the process, so I'm not certain.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, move on to the next, since we don't have any application for the Harper's Ferry Bolivar Public Service District. Region Nine, or the Eastern Panhandle Regional Planning and Development Council, two-year term. I found one applicant in my packet, Dennis Jarvis, our new JCDAs director.
Yeah, and this is, I, it makes sense to have him on that Region Nine Council. So I'll move that he be appointed to the Region Nine Planning and Development Council to represent Jefferson County.
I'll second that. And we have no other applicants. I don't know if anybody knows of anyone else that is interested. We have the motion before us to appoint Mr. Jarvis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now, we're down to Parks and Rec. There are three, three-year terms ending June 30th, 2023. From what I can tell, there are three applicants. There might be somebody that came in late, I'm not sure.
I see, I think we only have three, and I believe we have all three of those individuals on the phone.
Well, why don't you? Recognize them.
Okay.
Find them and bring them on.
All right, so Dale, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So Dale Manuel first.
Okay. Mr. Manuel, tell us why you want to consider, continue to serve on Parks and Rec, please.
Thank you. It's been my honor to serve on Parks and Rec, all the way back to when it was a trailer at the beginning of the lane, back to the Sam Michaels property. I've had a great field of experience working with young people since I'm a retired teacher, retired legislature, and retired commissioner. I have a great interest in the parks in Jefferson County and what they provide for children and adults. And I want to continue my service. I noticed that when Sheriff Myers talked about the playground at High Grove, she didn't mention there are 11 devices there that will be utilized by disabled individuals. Autism and other disabilities will have a place to go and have recreational opportunities in a playground setting in Jefferson County. We have a lot of challenges now before Parks and Rec because of the virus. But I think we're up to it, so I'd like to continue my service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Manuel?
Not for me.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, I, I think Dale Good does a great job, along with the rest of the board members, so nothing other than that.
Okay. All right, Stephanie, our next applicant.
Our next applicant is Mr. Hill, who was here earlier, but now it looks like he's gone. So let's move on to Mr. Paul Marshall is here.
Okay.
Mr. Marshall?
Good evening.
Good evening, we hear you.
Yes, good evening. We're interviewing for Parks and Recreation Commission, and I know you've served for a while. Can you tell us why you want to stay on?
I, I've appreciated my opportunity to serve, and I wish to continue to do so. I'm really, it's a really great mission. It's a great thing to be involved with. I have a skill set that I think is, is pretty useful. In fact, recently, I'm in charge of the COVID-19 Return to the Workplace procedure development for the National Cancer Institute of Frederick. And I've been in touch with that for quite a bit over the past few months. So that's been useful. Unfortunate, it's unfortunate that that's needed at this point. But we're doing a lot of great things at Park and Rec. I've, I've been, I think I've got a long view. Worked through auditing, impact fee, recalculation, something I've been very involved with. There's kind of a lot of exciting things in the horizon. Implementing our master plan and really just trying to do right by the citizens of Jefferson County, provide places to recreate and places just to, you know, be outside and relax.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners, any other questions from fellow commissioners?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
None here.
No questions.
All right. Caleb?
No, none for me.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna keep this short and simple. I move that we reappoint Dale Manuel, David Hill, and Paul Marshall to the three, three-year terms ending on June 30th, 2023 of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second?
Second.
All right, we've got two seconds there, which is great. We have any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service, yeah.
Stephanie, we're moving on to Board of Health.
Okay.
Okay.
So Board of Health is one of the ones that requires party balance and the five districts. But we have, we will strike that balance no matter who is appointed because we have one Republican who will be, who is currently serving, and then the other two applicants are legislative independents. So you would strike that party balance, and they can come from each of the five districts. So we won't run up against our district, any problem with the district.
Right.
So we have.
You have John Breckins? Yes. If he's on the line.
He is on the line, or he was. Yep, he is here, so I mean. There we go. Mr. Brezlin, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Brezlin. Thank you for participating in this process. Somewhat cumbersome to do all this online, as you well know. Just tell me when you, why you want to continue serving on the Board of Health, which is, as you know, a very critical position during this once-in-a-lifetime, hopefully, situation.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In, in my application, I did list the accomplishments of the Health Department on the challenges. But for me personally, I, I really enjoy the challenge, and I enjoy the public service, and I'm certainly very committed to the goals of the Health Department. I do want to help Jefferson County improve the health of its citizens. I've got the people I work with, I've got tremendous respect for the staff of the Health Department and for our newly appointed Dr. Reedy, who I work very closely with. And also with Nathan, I have to put in a good word for Nathan too, because we work very closely with Nathan. I'm in, he probably hates me to say this, but I'm in almost daily contact with him about this and that. So, and we get along very well. There's a lot of work to be done, including something that we're, we're in the middle of now. Marty Freeman, our Health Administrator, retired at the end of June. We're in the process of interviewing several candidates, and I think we'll be doing those interviews along with Dr. Reedy and one of the other board members next week. We're in, as you said, we're, we are in the middle of a crisis, and certainly I, I do feel there's a need for continuity. Just so, you know, I've been there for five years, I pretty much know how the system works. And I would certainly prefer to have that continuity and be able to continue to work with, with the staff. And I think there's, there's an ongoing opportunity to improve the visibility and reputation of the Health Department. And it certainly has become much more visible as all of you die into the two o'clock meeting every day. And he's also responsible for the webpage, and he's got greatly improved webpage as well. So I certainly am very enthused about the idea of continuing.
Okay. Do my fellow commissioners have any questions for, additional questions for Mr. Brezlin?
No questions, but I do notice that he's been on most every two o'clock call concerning the COVID, and I, I commend him for that.
Yes, you have much better attendance on that than me. Go ahead.
Just, I'm sure everybody else hears this, someone is ruffling papers. I'm not gonna go who I think it is, but that probably cannot continue as possible. The second thing, Mr. Brezlin, just regarding the Board of Health's vote to effectively relinquish their power to a single individual in the county, looking back on that vote, do you still agree with that?
Well, I, I don't think, I think you're not quite accurate in that. We, we really go along with what the governor says and with the governor's executive orders. And that's really, that's really what guides us. And then that comes down through the, through Dr. Reedy and into the staff. I don't think, maybe it was perceived as, as Dr. Reedy taking over complete control, but it really wasn't intended to be that way.
Okay, I appreciate, I, I've got some feedback from the community regarding that. Just from my perspective, sitting on the Parks and Rec Board, who has had numerous special sessions for other matters, seeing the Board of Health not do that raises some concern with county residents. I appreciate your feedback on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brezlin? Thank you, sir. We'll, we thank you for your comments, and we'll interview our other two people. Whoever you can bring up next, Stephanie.
Our next person is Judith Jones.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Okay, yes, here I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh great, that's great, good.
Yeah.
So I'm delighted, delighted to see some of you and talk with the rest of you. I moved here in 1986 and worked, still kept working in Washington, but I have been spending increasing amounts of time on West Virginia and Jefferson County activities. In 1995, I was asked by the people at Jefferson Memorial Hospital, as it was then called, to form healthier Jefferson County. I think some of you know John Applebaum and Teresa McCabe, and I worked with them. And then I worked with John Sherwood when he became the administrator, and we did a lot of work together on emergency preparedness and response. And I have been working with the Health Department on and off throughout that time. And I, while I worked in Washington on health policy issues, I really used my time here in, in Shepherdstown and in Jefferson County to appreciate what it's like on the receiving end of federal edicts and to try to tell people at the federal level what, what's really needed at a local level. In all my work, I think I understand very well the regulatory responsibilities of the Health Department, the direct service responsibilities, when they do have to provide direct health care, and the preparedness and response capabilities that are needed. I do also participate in the two o'clock call, and I must say, everybody is wonderful on those calls and, and learn from each other, and it's the most, it's one of the most constructive conversations I think I've heard in many years. And lastly, I think I appreciate the financing issues of a Health Department, which, how do you balance government grants and healthcare fees if you can get them? And how do you also work with public-private partnerships? So those are the things that I'm interested in, I'd like to continue working on them. And I hope I could be of service to the community. I think it's a great community, I love it.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions for Ms. Jones? Hearing none, we'll go on to Mr. Franklin. Stephanie can bring him on board.
Mr. Franklin, it says that you're self-muted, I have unmuted you. Mr. Franklin? Mr. Franklin, are you there? Does he's unmuted, both, like, both of us have unmuted him.
Have him check his volume. I don't know, if he has speakers, he's turned it down, or... Can he send you a chat message?
Yeah, I'll ask him. Nope, wait, he's already doing...
Oh, okay. May not have a microphone.
It says he's calling in.
Okay.
So... So, it's, I mean, it says that, I can see when people are self-muting and it says that he's unmuted.
He says he's also on the phone.
He is on the phone.
Yeah.
I just sent him a message. Mr. Franklin, can you hear me now? Let me go, because I moved him from the... I moved him from the attendee list to the panelist list and he's still in our attendee list.
Does he need to call back in? That was his question a minute ago.
Oh, did you see, I didn't see a comment from him.
Yeah, at 8:18. Do I need to call back in?
Okay. Okay, I told him to try that. I made him a presenter to see if, if that would work. And actually, I've just figured out, now that I can see, it allows me to see people's computer screens. If I could be of any extra help, which I'm not usually, but I did tell him to try and call back in.
Stephanie, one option, he has his mobile home and work phone numbers in his resume. Maybe you could try calling him. I don't know how that would work to get him on the webinar.
Well, I did that once before, so with the, it's been a month ago, but I'll try that.
Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Franklin, this is Stephanie Grove, I'm the county administrator.
Okay, I can hear you.
Yes, okay. We couldn't get you, so I thought we would try calling you. Can everyone hear Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin, can you hear the commissioners? And if you can, I will relay the questions that they ask you for your interview.
Yes, I think I can.
Okay, all right, okay.
I've been asking the questions. Other commissioners put forth a question for Mr. Franklin, please.
Yeah, I'll be happy to ask Mr. Franklin a question. What's your interest in serving on the Board of Health, Mr. Franklin?
As you can see from the resume, I'm a long-term employee with the Virginia Department of Health. I've been there over 30 years, finally just retired and still interested in health and wanted to serve. I've been Jefferson County a long time and wanted to have the opportunity to serve here. I have especially experienced an onsite water and sewage...
Hold on a second. I'm not sure. I do, okay.
All right, we heard Mr. Franklin's response and he wants, I believe, is that... Didn't he get to say everything he wanted to say?
Mr. Franklin, did you, I'm sorry, did you get to say everything you wanted to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
One more question is, would you have any difficulties attending the meetings when they're scheduled?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from fellow commissioners?
This is Commissioner Compton. Mr. Franklin, what do you, what do you think needs to be most improved at the Board of Health currently?
My real heart is with the environmental part. And I think the large number of onsite systems that we've got, especially with the alternative systems, that I'm not sure are being maintained. That's where my real expertise is, getting systems designed right, installed right, and then maintaining that for their install.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
People on a car's geography, it's really important that they be taken care of. And with my experience with the alternative systems is that if they're not maintained, they're mostly not working. They really need maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll open the floor for nominations for the, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Franklin, for answering our questions.
Thank you.
I'm going to open the floor for the, the one five-year term ending June 30th, 2025. Open the floor for nominations. Do I have any nominations?
I'm going to nominate John Brezlin for that position.
Okay.
I'll nominate Ms. Judith Jones.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right, the two nominations for the five-year term, John Brezlin and Judith Miller-Jones. All those for John Brezlin? Say aye.
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 Aye. I think that's three ayes. Am I correct? That's for Patsy, Ralph, and Jane?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And then for Judith Miller-Jones? Who votes for Judith?
Aye.
Aye.
That's Caleb and Josh, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brezlin will be serving the five-year term on a three-two vote. And then we have one unexpired term ending June 30th, 2021. So, it's just, you know, a little under a year of that term. I'm looking for nominations for that term.
Well, I'm going to nominate, I like the idea of having, of having someone who has experience in the field on the board. I think Jones and Mr. Franklin, either one would be a great addition to the board, but I'm going to nominate Mr. Franklin. It sounds like somebody's running around in their, marching around in their room.
I'm going to apologize. I'm going to apologize, my grandson just came home.
Okay.
Thought that was you, Ralph.
I'm not that fast.
All right. We have one nomination of Jerry Franklin. I am going to nominate Judith Miller-Jones. I, I worked with her, it's been quite a while ago and I am very impressed with her breadth of knowledge of health care and all the, she said, the intricacies of working at the local level and finding the money and so forth. So, I think that she would bring maybe another viewpoint or another level of expertise to the Health Board. To the Board of Health. So, we have two nominations for the one unexpired term. All those in favor of Jerry Franklin, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it sounds like that's only Patsy and maybe Ralph's grandson, I'm not sure. And then all those for Judith Miller-Jones, say aye.
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 Caleb?
Yes, I said aye.
Okay, and Josh?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, for, okay, so four to one, Ms. Jones will be on the Board of Health. And thank you all for interviewing and you all bring specialties to the Board of Health and it's really the hot seat right now in the county and we need good people that can serve. Thank you so much for applying and continuing your service. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Okay, we're running half an hour behind, but that's life here. We are on item number 10. Kathy Santa Barbara, attorney.
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, great, great. Will you start with your presentation and we'll figure out where to go from there?
Yes, thank you very much, good evening. I'd like to say the people whom I am representing this evening, it's Robert Acheson, Wordcliff Road in Charlestown, Christopher and Suzie Burke, Bethany Lane, Charlestown, Zachary and Penny Curry, Bethany Lane, Robert and Patricia Funk, Old Shenondale Road, Catherine Goswick and William Gillette, Jasmine Place and Harper's Ferry, Amen and Janine Jalil, Bethany Lane in Charlestown, Jennifer Miller, Creekside Lane, Charlestown, Archibald, Rusty Morgan, Dairyville Pike and Rippon, Michael Nemec, Cabletown Road, Charlestown, Douglas Rockwell, Daly Road, Charlestown, Timothy Ross, Flowing Springs Road in Charlestown, Thomas and Ann Trumbull, Warm Springs Road, Shenandoah Junction, Mary Walker, Cabletown Road in Charlestown, and Jason Thickefus of Goshen-Araban Lane in Charlestown. First, I'd like to thank you all for placing me on the agenda. I tried to get on the webinar, but I'm not very good at that. I asked to be included to encourage the commission on behalf of my clients and perhaps on behalf of a lot of people similarly situated in Jefferson County to remand this matter back to, the matter of the solar farms, back to the Planning Commission to further hold the public hearings on permitting solar farms in the eight zoning districts. I think it's important to note that this text amendment was brought before the Planning Commission back in November of 2019 by Stanley Dunn in a letter in which he requested that solar farms be permitted as a conditional use in the rural district. The petition which accompanied that letter along with the proposed text amendment was presented to the Planning Commission at its December 2019 meeting by Sam Gilland of Torch Clean Energy, who along with Paul Rocco was acting as Mr. Dunn's consultants, I believe. At the December meeting, the Planning Commission voted to create a three-person subcommittee to work with Mr. Gilland and Mr. Rocco and that subcommittee apparently met over the next several months, but not in a public setting. At the May 5th, 2020, meeting of the Planning Commission, which like the April meeting, was held via Zoom due to the COVID pandemic, the Planning Commission acted on a motion by one of the subcommittee members to hold a public hearing on the text amendment on June 2nd. That sole public hearing, as required by the zoning ordinance, was noticed in the spirit of Jefferson to be held at 7:00 PM on June 2nd in the Charlestown Library Meeting Room. That notice was defective. Despite the continuing pandemic and the fact that prior Planning Commission meetings had been held via Zoom, the public hearing was still noticed to be an in-person meeting at the library. And while I understand from speaking with the planning clerk that earlier on, the library door had been posted to notify the public that the meetings would be held via Zoom, that that important effort was discontinued. Further, the public notice in the spirit of Jefferson that this solar farm text amendment would result in solar farms being a permitted use in only seven zoning districts, which were the general commercial, highway commercial, light industrial, major industrial, rural, residential, light industrial, commercial, and industrial commercial. But, and then at the June 2nd public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to keep public comment open for an additional 10 business days, but this fact was never indicated on the pub, on the Planning Commission's website until five days after that meeting. Then at the June 23rd meeting of the Planning Commission, of course, no public comment was permitted and the Planning Commission then voted to add the Residential Growth District to the zoning districts where solar farms would be allowed as a permitted use. And so, there was no meaningful public input from anyone in those, in that zoning district, since it had never been publicly noticed. Now, it's my understanding that historically, this commission has looked to the Planning Commission to provide necessary expertise after a meaningful public hearing on amendments such as this one. Here, however, that meaningful public hearing was sorely lacking due to the change in location without proper public notice and due to the inclusion of this additional zoning district after the public notice was given. And for those reasons, we are asking for a remand for a properly noticed public hearing. And for those reasons, we are asking for a remand for a properly noticed public hearing before the Planning Commission, before this very important issue, which affects many people in Jefferson County, is brought before this commission. And I think that pretty much sums it up. I tried to do it quickly since you're running late.
Right, right. That's, uh, thank you for making your comments. I don't know if county commissioners have questions? I see Nathan has popped up on our screen, our legal counsel.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Nathan.
Okay. Mr. Cochran?
There are a couple of things that I think we need to just understand about the function of the Planning Commission and the function of the County Commission here. The Planning Commission has drafted an ordinance and brought it to you. Now, your, what you will probably vote on in a little while is whether or not to hold public hearings about this draft ordinance. You're not passing the ordinance tonight. So, in my view, there are, if there were any difficulties below, and I'm not saying there were, but if there were, you're certainly going to hold public hearings, you could hold a public workshop, whatever mechanism that you choose to obtain additional public input. And it would seem to me like if there were any problems below, that that would cure Here's another couple of thoughts. What Ms. Santa Barbara, who is an attorney for whom I have great respect, what she is asking you to do is in effect sit as an appellate body over the actions of the Planning Commission. And it seems to me like if they believe that the June 2nd notice was defective, that they should have filed a petition for writ of certiorari with the Circuit Court within 30 days. That's the remedy for a, an illegal, a claim of an illegal act at the, at the Planning Commission. They did not do that. So, and I would say that it is my understanding that there was a, there was a, there is a public, or a, the Planning Commission was in the mode of holding virtual hearings, and that, and that time for holding virtual hearings was going to end. And so, the, and the County Commission was in that same mode, and the Planning Commission was just following the County Commission as far as the time for holding virtual hearings and virtual meetings. At the end of that time, the County Commission went ahead and extended the timeframe for holding your hearings virtually, but the advertisement for the Planning Commission hearing had already gone out. So that's why the Planning Commission, I believe, expected the hearing to be held in person. And then once the County Commission went ahead and continued using virtual hearing process, then the Planning Commission decided to do that too. But the notice was already out there that said that there was a, going to be a physical hearing. I will note that the agenda that was published by the Planning Commission in, you know, I believe that, and, you know, we could continue this over and have witnesses or people to testify to this that has more knowledge than me. But it's my understanding that the agenda was, did have the, the public, did have the Zoom information on it. It did for the, it did for the 23rd, and I have a copy of the agenda for the second. And it also has the information for the Zoom meeting. So while the notice, it looks like said for the meeting was going to be held in person, the agenda that went out with the, that controls what happens at the meeting was, did have the Zoom information on it. So, you know, the question would be, did the public have notice? And, you know, the public did have that notice. So, that's, you know, something that I believe is, is worthy of the County Commission's consideration, which is that the public did have notice of it being a Zoom meeting, and it wasn't just stuck on the library door, it was, it was published. So, as far as the defect in the notice of the June 2nd meeting, I believe that that should have been raised to the Circuit Court, and it was not. Now, for the County Commission to act as, in effect, an appellate court on that issue is, you know, may not be the appropriate step. Second, the County Commission is going to rehold all of these public hearings and that kind of thing. The County Commission, after consideration, you know, could alter the solar ordinance in any way that it chooses. And it would then have to see the back to the Planning Commission to get the Planning Commission's input on whether or not it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. But this matter is in the, in the County Commission's hands, and there will be, you know, assuming if you all choose to go forward and, but there will be plenty of time for anyone who has concerns about the ordinance. There will be plenty of time for the County Commission to change it in however it seems fit. And so, it seems to me like the Planning Commission was just in the mode of drafting something and sending it to you. And now you're gonna hear it and finalize it. So, you know, given the lateness of the hour, you know, I can go on if you want me to.
No, thank you.
I will try to, just leave it.
Okay.
Ms. Santa Barbara, an opportunity to respond.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have questions for Nathan first?
Not I.
All right, I'm not hearing anything.
Jane, let me, let me ask Nathan a question, because I'm the, I'm the commissioner sitting on the Planning Commission, and different from some other boards actually voted on that board. Does that affect me on doing any of this?
Nathan, you're muted.
Sorry. It's probably Stephanie that did that to me.
It wasn't me.
It was my. I mean, you function in your role as a, as a commissioner, as a planning commissioner, as a liaison, and now you're functioning in your role here. So, you know, I don't, I don't see an inherent conflict in that.
All right, I just wanted to be clear.
Okay. And Nathan, you indicated you wanted, we should give Ms. Santa Barbara an opportunity to speak after your comments, correct?
That would be up to you, but, you know, that would be probably the thing to do. I would say that any changes, to my knowledge, any changes that were made in the, in the document were made as a result of public comment. We made several changes into that document as a result of public comment, many of whom came from some of Ms. Santa Barbara's clients. So, I, I'm just saying, it wasn't like the commission, the Planning Commission did not respond to the public, there were changes made based on public comment.
Okay. Ms. Santa Barbara, do you have any comments to make?
Yes, I do. First of all, the zoning ordinance and state law requires a public hearing. And a public hearing is only effective if the notice is properly given. We stand by our statements that this public notice was not properly given, a writ of cert would have been totally premature. The June 23rd meeting was a meeting without an opportunity for public comment. And it was at that meeting that the motion was made to add the additional zoning district. So regardless of an opportunity to be heard again, the ordinance is clear that there must have been a public hearing before the, the Planning Commission, before that comes to this body. And the problem is that you don't have a public hearing if it's not a meaningful public hearing. It's not a meaningful public hearing if you don't have the proper notice of all of the zoning districts that are to be included in the text amendment, and it's not a proper or, or a public hearing if, in fact, the majority of people were not aware that the meeting would be by Zoom. And that's, you can't change state law by an executive order. You can't change state law by, and I'm talking about an executive order from the governor. You can't change the state law even by a Supreme Court order that changes something that has been legislatively mandated. And that therein lies the problem here, that this public hearing was not a meaningful public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Fellow commissioners, I'm going to propose that we move on to item number 11, and go through that presentation, and then, you know, there'll be the discussion on scheduling a public hearing. Are, is everyone okay moving forward to that next level of discussion? Or you have more you want to say on this item?
I'm fine.
Okay.
So, so we're not making a decision at this point on, on this issue?
No, I was going to propose that we move ahead on to item number 11, and then perhaps, you know, the issue will be resolved one way or the other.
All right.
Okay. Alex? I've got you down for zoning administrators, so you, will you give us an overview? And I'd say your last name, but I'm afraid I'll butcher it, so I'm calling you Alex tonight.
Okay, that's all right. I'm here, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, we're good.
All right, so it's Bo Yoo, just for the record. And I will provide you an overview of where we are right now. On June 23rd, the Planning Commission did make final revisions to the proposed draft based on public comment that had been received. So they are forwarding it to you with those revisions and the recommendation that the proposed text is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The request before you today would be to schedule a public hearing on the text as it's been drafted. Just to give you a quick overview of what's in here, the revisions include the addition of a couple of definitions within Article 2. And then if you go over to Article 8, there's the new section 8.20 for solar energy facilities. This provides the standards and a framework for the process. So the first step would always be to meet with staff under the pre-proposal conference meeting. We do that, that's standard for any kind of inquiry, whether that be a subdivision or, or a site development, so that we can go over what the ordinance requires. It's not required that people do that, but most people do meet with staff to do that. So that's your first step, that's informational. The next step would be to process a concept plan, which requires a public workshop before the Planning Commission. So that would put the public notice, or the public on notice of a project that's going in. But a concept plan is ministerial function, meaning if, if they reflect compliance with the standards as outlined within the zoning ordinance and the stormwater management regulations, then, then they would move forward with approval. There are opportunities for the public to provide input, it is a public workshop. The next step would then be to apply for a zoning certificate, which would be issued based on the concept plan being approved. The concept plan will address your setbacks, your buffers, the general location, the entrance, and some of the broad standards, not to go too in detail, but the setbacks would be 100-foot setback from exterior property lines. And just to give you an example, if a project were to be proposed for a large, you know, in a large area that might cross over multiple parcels, the interior property lines would not be subject to those setbacks, so it would be permitted, and that's, that's fairly common. The buffers, a vegetative buffer would not be required to be installed unless the solar panels are 200 feet from an existing residence. So you would measure from the edge of a panel to an existing residence, and if it's within 200 feet of that residence, then they would plant a buffer within that area or provide a fence screening. The, you'll see in here, in your packet, since I'm kind of going down this in order, there are recommended revisions to the stormwater management ordinance. That is simply to reflect a process in order to comply with the zoning ordinance requirements. So a stormwater management report is required. The storm, the revisions to the stormwater management ordinance basically state if you can comply with certain standards to mitigate stormwater runoff, then, you know, you can provide a report. If you're unable to do that, then you would have to follow the full requirements in the stormwater ordinance, stormwater management ordinance. And as part of the revisions from the Planning Commission meeting, we have revised the decommissioning plan. When previously, there was an affidavit in here from the planning, or from the property owner stating that they understood the responsibility of decommissioning the project, we received a number of public comments requesting that there be some sort of bonding in place. So the Planning Commission requested that legal counsel research this topic, and he brought back his research at the June 23rd meeting, and the Planning Commission voted to incorporate those requirements, which does require surety. And we will come up with guidelines that this references, you know, as, as we move forward with this text amendment, but the guidelines would not be incorporated into the text, the zoning ordinance. And then I think that's everything as far as an overview of the standards, and then of course, there's Appendix C as the final part of the zoning ordinance amendment, which lists where the use would be permitted and not permitted. So you can see, there are eight districts within there, where it would be permitted, and four where it would not be permitted. The stormwater management ordinance is in there, they're kind of lumped together, the assumption being, you know, that you can move forward with these two as kind of components together. I don't know how in-depth you want me to go with the stormwater management ordinance as, that's more of an engineering function, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Alex, and it has to do with decommissioning. The process, how long, say for example, let's just say that this is Say, for example, let's just say that this is approved, the solar facility is built, and then something happens and they decide to decommit. It's no longer in use and it's decommissioned. How long would it take to get the decommissioning ordinance in place to be able to move forward with that? Does that make sense?
Are you talking about the separate guidelines that we're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to have to defer to Nathan on this. But in, in speaking with Roger, the intent would be that we would, staff will be meeting with Nathan, including Roger as the, you know, he's the director of the planning and zoning engineering, and the engineering department oversees all bonding requirements. So the expectation would be that staff is developing a policy that we would present to you. I don't believe that a public hearing is required when it's for this policy, but I have to defer to Nathan on that. But the expectation would be that we would have a draft to you following this public process for you to review, because I think that you would have to vote and accept that.
Okay. So Nathan? You're muted.
I swear Stephanie's doing this. No, she, that's my fault. The, here's the backstory on that issue. Early on in this process, Roger issued a memorandum in which he opined that the standard bonding language that we always use for subdivisions and that kind of thing may not be applicable to this particular case. Because as you know, what happens is when you're doing a development, you bond it as a developer. And then if somehow the developer doesn't finish it for whatever reason, can be finished by the engineering staff, in, in fact, the engineering department using the money that was placed in the bond, right?
Right, yeah.
Finish the infrastructure and that kind of thing. And that's really clearly what the bonding section in the West Virginia code talks about. So it's less clear that that applies to a decommissioning of something. And so the planning commission asked me to review that issue at a prior hearing, which I did. And I tended to agree with Roger about his analysis of that, the bonding part. So I, on the other hand, thought that it would serve the public interest to have some method of enforcing a decommissioning process, because we don't know what's going to happen with this, you know, development. No one knows what's going to happen in the future. And so, so with the solar project, you want to be sure that you can remove it if something goes bad. There was, there was a procedure in the draft that talked about the landowner submitting an affidavit saying they would be responsible to, to deal with that issue. The problem with that is you don't know if, what if this solar company bought the land? And then the solar company is signing an affidavit saying that they will take care of it if they go bankrupt. And they go bankrupt, and then they're not able to take care of it. Second, you know, what if the landowner is mortgaged to the hilt on everything he owns and doesn't have any ability to take care of it? And so I was not really happy with this affidavit issue. So essentially, what it says now is that, that the county commission would use its authority under Chapter 7 to declare, to declare that, that a, an unused solar facility would be a hazard or nuisance. And then because of that, one of the conditions of approval would be that there be some sort of a bond issued to decommission. And it goes, it's a little more specific than that in the ordinance. But then it refers to a, to a plan or a guideline, set of guidelines that, that the, the planning department has. And that we're working on. And so that, I thought that it would be better to put that in a separate document. And that way, you know, if conditions change for some reason, the bonding process changes or whatever, it could be, the plan could be more fluidly amended and brought back to the commission for an additional approval. But it's less of a, it's less of a formal process than doing an ordinance amendment. If we put it all in the ordinance, then it, it may create a lot more problems and a lot less flexibility to deal with changing circumstances in the future. So that's where we are with the bonding process. The, what it says right now in the ordinance is if a solar facility isn't used for a period of 12 months, and I think this goes to more to your question, Commissioner Nolan, then, then the commission is declaring that to be a nuisance or a hazard. And that would trigger the decommissioning process.
Okay.
Yeah, all that would, it has to be like detailed in this guideline that we are going to prepare.
Okay, and I didn't want to get into a whole, because I know the purpose of this evening is to set a public hearing. But, but I did have that question, so thank you.
And, and let me also just point out real quick that, you know, you could also set a public workshop if the commission is concerned about making sure that, that everyone has, you know, more input into this. The commission can also set a workshop before they do a hearing, and that might alleviate some of the concerns of some of the folks that are out there.
Thank you.
Other commissioners have questions for either Nathan or Alex?
This is Josh, I just have one quick thing, Alex. As far, I don't want to get too in the weeds either, because Commissioner Nolan, this is just to set a public hearing. As far as the acreage threshold for this, is there no threshold?
There is no threshold. There's no minimum, there's no maximum.
And I know a lot of stuff on social media has gone around the bus a little bit. Is this 8,000 acres for this specific project? Or, I know that was floating around, I believe that's inaccurate, correct?
Well, I just want to clarify, there is no specific project at this time. We do not have any plans or even parcels that have been identified. Obviously, this was initiated by a local landowner. So we have an expectation of the general area. But, but, I mean, it wouldn't be limited to that. Obviously, when you have a text amendment, it affects anywhere in the county. I have not heard of anything being 8,000 acres, so I don't know where that's coming from. The general numbers that I've heard have really been in the 300 to 500 acre thresholds. But those, again, those have been, nothing concrete or no actual projects. They've just been kind of used as examples, if, if that helps. So I know that there are some states, North Carolina, where this was being promoted, where there were several smaller tracts that were being developed. My understanding is they had a grant program in place for smaller tracts. So the expectation is that that wouldn't happen up here. But again, there's no minimum or maximum threshold on this.
So, I mean, and if this were to go through essentially and as written, I mean, we could meet a situation where there could be thousands and thousands of acres of county land as solar farms.
That would be a possibility. I don't expect that, but yes.
Okay, I mean, I just, and one last thing, just from my opinion based on Nathan's suggestion. I, I think a public workshop would be a better course of action currently, based upon previous comments and public comments. But that's just my standpoint. I don't know how you achieve that during a COVID session. Maybe a very large room with a people floating in and out, but.
Commissioner, we did, when we had our town hall with Dr. Reedy, we had 72 attendees. And they were able to ask, they both asked written questions or they could communicate with the panelists. So we could do it that way if you wanted to, using the GoToWebinar format. I think that works pretty well for the, for the town hall that we did.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Stephanie. I just, I know previous agenda item topic was mentioning that being Zoom or being remotely was not accordance, in accordance with the law. I don't know if we can do it that way and be in accordance. I don't know if that was even accurate, that statement. So I just want to make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is regarding these public hearings and public input.
Okay. I have my own legal opinion about that, but I'll defer to Nathan.
I mean, yeah. Not a lawyer either here, so I'm going to defer to the lawyers as well.
All right. My question of Alex, with all the zones or districts that the solar panels would possibly be allowed in, my just best guess by looking at the map would be about 75% of the county. Is that about accurate as far as acreage? Taken out the town?
For potential development?
Right.
Yeah, I would, I mean, that sounds about accurate.
That would be a buy right in all those zones and all that acreage. Yeah.
Yes.
That's, okay. Any other questions of staff? Well, I am going to make a very unusual motion. And I'll make the motion and explain my reasons. And, well, maybe I need to make the motion, give my reasons first, make the motion, and hopefully get a second. I believe I move that these text amendments go back to the planning commission without a public hearing before the county commission. And I have several reasons for that. One is that the residential growth district was added at the last minute, and there was no public comment on that. That wasn't even up for consideration. Alex, you shook your head no, and, and maybe I.
There, there was a written comment on it that was provided by Mark Dick from Gordon. Though I do want to clarify that he did make that comment in his written submission.
Okay, well, and I didn't see that. I was thinking of what was said orally during the meeting.
Okay.
But that, that concerns me that there was no public comment permitted on that additional thing. I understand about the decommissioning. My other concern is that it could encompass such a large area of the county. But on the other hand, you know, this issue needs to be addressed for solar facilities. I understand where many landowners are coming from, looking for some steady income, especially as they, you know, they roll back their operations for whatever reason, health or family or, you know, just a lot of different reasons. So my motion is to be, to send it back to the planning commission. It started out as a request for conditional use, and I think that's a good starting point again, but that's my personal opinion. Do I have a second?
I'll give a second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, I just want to be sure that it's the appropriate thing to do as far as, or the, yeah, the appropriate thing to do, to send it. I just, Nathan, Nathan said earlier that he wasn't, he didn't really know that it would be appropriate because we'd be acting as an appellate court, and that should be done through the circuit court. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to doing that, but I just want to be sure we're on solid footing here.
Okay. Well, I, I thought maybe you, we were talking about the notice, but maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, and, you know, I suppose, you know, you could do anything you want to do. Any of these things that, that Commissioner Tab is suggesting, you could do. You could make any changes to this document that you want. You would have to send it then back to the planning commission as, to ask them if it was consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is why that I said, you know, you could have a public workshop. But if you, you know, it's, it's, I think that it is less, it is less appropriate to send it back to the planning commission, but I don't know that it's, you know, illegal or anything like that. So it would be up to the commission's decision on that issue.
Okay.
This is Josh. I, I guess my thing is, is a previous project was left with another entity, and the county commission was not as engaged or intertwined, or so the public perceived. I personally agree with Commissioner Nolan. We still can hold a public hearing. That doesn't necessarily mean we're going to vote for or against it. We could slice and dice this thing back and then send it back to the planning commission even. So I think it, it's better held at the county commission so we, as commissioners, can solicit feedback from residents directly. I'm not saying I agree or disagree with the text amendment or how it's set up at all. Just as a commissioner, I would rather hear directly from the county residents at our own public hearing.
And that's, that is why I said you do, you did have the option to set a, a public workshop to get, you know, more people to come in and.
I meant to say workshop. Yeah, I agree with a workshop, not the public hearing. I think the workshop with the county commission is the adequate way to look at this currently, but that's one commissioner talking, so.
Okay. Caleb or Ralph, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I do believe that people are just starting to figure out what this whole solar thing was about. I don't think anybody opposes some solar, but I don't think anybody realized what was happening. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see it go back to planning commission, and they have a workshop, and that it be worked out. And that way, give everybody a chance to, to sit down and work it out before it even gets to us. That's my view. I was involved, I voted against it, but I did vote for one of the subtexts. So I'd be blamed for part of it too, but.
Okay, do you, Caleb, do you have any comments?
Nah, just that we're probably going to end up changing a lot of it anyway, so it's probably going to get sent back regardless.
Okay. Well, the motion on the floor, as it currently stands, is to send the text amendments back to the planning commission. Everybody ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. I heard Patsy and Josh and Caleb say no.
I was a nay.
Okay, and then Ralph, were you an aye or a nay?
I, I was an aye.
Okay. So the motion fails two to three. Okay.
Well, and I would like to move that the county commission hold a workshop on this text amendment and move, move forward in that direction.
Second.
Okay, do we need to set? It says schedule a public hearing. We're, we're going for a public workshop. So do we need to set the date now or work with staff to have that set up? Because it's going to take planning and zoning plus our own staff. Alex?
I think in the past, even when scheduling public hearings, that the commission has voted to move it to a public hearing and deferred to staff to schedule it based on noticing requirements and staff availability. So I would say that would probably be appropriate under the circumstances as well.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
All right. So, kind of lost track. Is there a motion on the floor? So kind of lost track. Is there a motion on the floor to schedule a public workshop? Patsy, you made that motion, right?
I did.
And, and it was seconded and that's to be coordinated with staff availability and so forth, all the players we need at the table.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody understand what the motion is? Schedule a public workshop, date to be determined with staff availability and so forth. Correct?
Correct.
Right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Okay. More work ahead. Thank you, Alex.
I know. Yeah.
You probably should allow the Santa Barbara to tell that she objects to it. So for the record.
Thank you. Yes, I do.
Okay. All right. We got that on the record. All right. Thank you so much, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
All right. All right, Mr. Cochran. Given the late hour, what do we need to do?
Okay. Uh, given the late hour, um, let me just kind of pare down this feeling. I know I have it here somewhere. My desk looks like a filing cabinet. Drew up on it.
Did you want to do the new business before you did Nathan, since we might go into executive session?
Oh, okay. Okay. I didn't even think about that part of it. All right.
I'll give you, I just tried to give you more time Nathan to find the, find the list.
Yes.
Okay.
This is, I picked up my copy of the agenda and I was ready to, to go forward. That's okay.
All right. I know. You're pure, poor abused fellow. Okay. We will move on to new business, item number 13. And, uh, Mr. Compton, what do you wish to bring to our attention on this? Recycling ordinance.
Okay. So, uh, these are, these two items are at the request of the solid waste authority board. I guess currently the county only had one municipal waste operator, Apple Valley Waste. We have another one called, I think it's, uh, Panhandle Dumpsters. I don't know if Nathan was able to look this over. There was, I don't know if crinkling their papers either, but there is an issue. Uh, Nathan, were you able to look at this? I guess the new operator called Panhandle Dumpsters, the solid waste authority board had a concern. They were not adequately recycling as an operator per our ordinance. They replied, our ordinance is outdated. Nathan, any, uh?
Yeah, I, I did look at it, um, briefly. Uh, I believe that I need to review our ordinance and the code section. There have been some changes in the under, underlying code section. They may require us to move forward with some sort of an amendment to our ordinance. And I'm trying to determine at this moment, uh, what that amendment would look like. If we can just amend our current ordinance or if we need to follow, uh, the new procedures in the code, which are more involved. So I'm trying to look at that issue and I think that, uh, maybe I should just report back to you at the next county commission meeting.
And that, that's fine. I just, the solid waste authority board had a concern. I told them I bring it up to the county commissioners. And I, I think that's an adequate response, Nathan. I think you're muted, Jane.
Okay, Josh. Um, agenda item number 14.
Okay, uh, another, uh, solid waste authority board request. So the board has acknowledged and the community has provided feedback during the problems getting in and out of the solid waste authority. I think we've all seen that. Never to go there on a Saturday. You may spend four hours in line. This is a very forward looking thing. They wanted to know if there was even a possibility of any amount of land near Burr Industrial Park where they could even consider relocating that solid waste authority at some point in time to make it more of a strategic location for county residents. I know down Lee Town Pike is not as accessible for certain parts of the county. And as we grow as a county, that solid waste authority cannot grow as well because of the landfill cap. So I think this is a forward looking thing. I don't know if there's even a possibility of land available to that amount. But I just, I told them I bring it to you all's attention and here I am.
Well, let me just say as a member of the development authority that, um, that group probably, uh, you might want to talk to the director, the new director. Um, I think we have to consider, uh, the businesses that are there and wanting to attract new businesses out to, to the development authority. And so, uh, from my standpoint, um, I don't know that that's, uh, that, you know, I don't know what land could be used that would not detract from what is current, what the, what the development authority is currently trying to do with the Burr Park. That's just my two cents. And as one, uh, commissioner and one member of the board.
There's also a housing there. Close to the Burr Park.
There are issues with that request. I'm aware. I just wanted to bring it forth. So everybody was of the understanding that those thoughts existed at the solid waste authority board. But I'll report back and have them contact the new executive director.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. That sounds like the way to go. Okay. Um, number 15. Meeting room used by outside agencies during COVID-19. Was this from Stephanie?
Yes. Um, so since we haven't been meeting there, um, we haven't also been allowing outside agencies to use, um, our meeting room either. Um, and it, and I think that that policy also limits people from having gatherings. But we have had some requests and we haven't, you know, we've been, and the library has been closed though. I think the library is having a soft opening, um, soon, either this week, I think, or maybe they already had it. I can't remember. Marcello was on here, I think.
Well, I got, I got an announcement about it, but you could come in and look at the exhibits by appointment, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I guess the, the staff here, as we're getting those requests, we're not allowing people to use the room, but we want to make sure that that's in accordance with the commission's will as well to not allow the use of that room while we are not using it and while we're still in the midst of the pandemic.
Well, I think it's a safe thing to do.
Well, I think, uh, we need to keep it closed. Just, I mean, it'll be another area that the staff would have to clean after each use. And, um, apparently, you know, and I understand the library's position there, they are not cleaning the bathrooms just because they don't have the staff. So, um, I, I just think it's wise us to keep it closed. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I mean, I agree with you all. I know at some point in the near future we can act somewhat normal terms, but as of right now, the cleaning concern is my concern.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. So I, Caleb, do you have any thoughts? Do you want to share?
That's fine. No, that's fine.
Okay.
So I think that's unanimous consent. I don't think they need to make a decision on it.
Right. Okay. Uh, cooperative law enforcement agreement, number 16. Don't we do this every year, Stephanie?
Yes. Um, yes, these are just the, the agreements that we have, um, with some of the federal agencies here in the county and we do that every year. I don't, Nathan, have you reviewed this? I think it's the same as the one as last year. I don't even.
Yeah, I think they're the same as, uh,
Okay.
Sure. I, um, yeah, I believe that's true.
Okay. So it's just a basically kind of a mutual aid agreement between us, the, the four and the USDA. I just lost it again.
Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the cooperative law enforcement agreement between the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department and the USDA Force Service Region 9 Law Enforcement and Investigation and the Harper's Ferry Job Corps Civilian Conservation Center.
Second.
All right. Have any questions or discussions on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I believe we've done everything. Uh, we're down to county administrator reports or no, we've got to go back to Nathan? Or do you want to do your thing, Stephanie?
Let's go ahead and do my thing. It shouldn't take long. I'll get, I'll script the COVID-19 updates. And you all already know this. Um, we've applied for our CARES Act funding. The first round was due on June 30th. We received that reimbursement for almost everything that we asked for. Michelle has submitted that second round. That was, that's, that's now coming due. So the expenses that we got for the first round were through, I believe, April 30th, and then she submitted the second round. So we're just waiting for that. I continue to meet with the task force. Um, and I've let them know, you know, what we've requested and what we were reimbursed for. And I've encouraged them to ask, um, to make similar requests to ours for their expenses. And the ambulance fee billing, we switched our ambulance fee billing over to Tyler, which will allow us to audit the, the bills a lot better than the system we're using now. The system we're using now was created, from something that was for tax. Um, it was GST, I think, created it out of the tax system. But it's really difficult to make changes and to audit it. So we've been switching that over. However, because of that, um, the bills are probably not going to go out until August 31st. I don't think that that's an issue because, um, you've already waived the late fee through the end of this year. So it won't matter, um, that the bills are going out late. However, I'd still kind of like the commission's blessing to approve those bills instead of going out on July 31st, that they would be out by August 31st. And we'll try to get them out before then. We have, uh, this, the, all of the billing information is loaded into the Tyler system. Dawn and Michelle have, have attended training and I think we're ready to actually print the bills and have them stuffed, but that takes longer. And I don't think we're going to get it done by July 31st. We might, but I don't think we will. So we'll try to get it out as close to that July 31st, but I'd like the commission to give us August 31st, just in case. Just in case we don't hit that deadline.
Well, that, well, that extend the due date as well, Stephanie.
Well, it doesn't, yeah, it probably will, but it doesn't matter because we've already waived the late fee. You did that a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah.
So the late fees are waived through the end of the year. So it won't matter that people get it late because they won't pay a late fee. But yeah, I mean, it would extend the, the date. We do, it would extend the date by a month, which really is, is again, of no consequence since the
Right.
late fees have been waived.
Okay.
So I would like a motion on that one, just so if people, you know, if we do get a, we do get a, um, you know, a challenge on it. I'm not sure why we would, but, um, just so we could say the commission said we could do it to, up to, obviously.
And maybe that we extend the ambulance fee billing to August.
Second.
Jane, you're muted.
Thank you. Um, my question is Stephanie, is that on the ambulance billing that is going out about a month late, we know the late fees are waived. Is that on the ambulance fee billing? Okay.
Yes, well, I know.
Good.
Okay.
Any more questions or discussion on, well, we don't have a motion.
Well, I think I did make the motion, uh, but I'll do it again, just for the record in case.
Thank you.
I move that we extend the ambulance fee, the 2020 ambulance fee billing to August 31st, uh, to 2020.
Second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let me tell it's getting late.
Then there is something on Nathan's, um, and part of that requires an executive session, but Commissioner Compton had indicated that he wanted to talk about, um, the electeds and their, the way that they provide merit increases. And I don't know, Commissioner Compton, if you still want to talk about that. But that's a discussion that we could have an open session, um, if you still wanted to discuss that issue. I didn't put it on separately.
I guess, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, draw it out. I guess the, uh, the question was, is the continuity of merit increases. I guess it does not exist among elected officials and the county commission staff, correct?
So the commission gives them as of higher date. But, or like any, any employee who falls under the commission, they cannot get their merit increase until their hire date comes up. So it comes up throughout the year. For the electeds, um, some of them, and I, I just have a new, a, a new office that wasn't doing the merit increase, but, um, I met with, um, the circuit clerk and now she is going to follow that policy this year. The clerk of the county commission follows the policy, though she also does provide raises when people with higher salaries leave. She's provided like a 14% raise, a 26% raise. Um, she just provided another raise, a couple of other raises this year off of higher date, but she also follows the merit, but she does give the 2% with the merit policy, um, though she has used higher salaries and distributed those amongst employees when higher earning employees have left. I don't think the prosecutor is currently following the merit increase, uh, policy. I don't think the assessor is either, or maybe, I don't, I don't think she is, um, or the sheriff. So we have right now, um, the, the circuit clerk is, has indicated that she is going to use that merit increase policy and do it as of higher date. And then, um, like I said, the clerk of the county commission does provide merit increases as of higher date, but also has provided additional increases throughout the year when higher earning employees have left. So that, I mean, and the way that the law is right now is for elected officials, they do not have to follow our policies. You provide them the money in the budget and they can distribute that money as they see fit, including when higher earning employees leave, if they want to spread that salary around, if it's in their budget that fiscal year, they can do that. Um, however, if, for those of us who have been here for a while, that's what caused a problem because we had clerks in different offices making like $10,000 difference, even though the, the, the duties are kind of the same. Um, so that's when we did that Jacob study, probably 10 years ago now. So that's what caused the issue to begin with is spreading that salary around. It used to be that electeds would give money back and I knew that Patsy can speak to that. You know, they, if they had leftover salary, it would just go back to the county commission in our carryover. Um, and some electeds still do that, but some do not. Um, so, but we can't control them. We can't force them at this time, the way the state of the law is, we cannot force them to follow our merit policy. They're provided a number for salaries and they can distribute that as they see fit, um, every year that the budget is approved. So I mean, that, if you want to change that, we could ask, we could talk to our legislators about writing that into some legislation. But the way that the, the law is right now, using existing Supreme Court opinions, um, and based on, you know, which is interpreting our current statutory law, you cannot control what an elected pays an individual employee. We do, but we do, when, I want to be clear, the money that they're getting in their budget is based upon higher date. So they don't get extra money just because they may get- So they don't get extra money just because they may get, so what, what many electeds are doing is they're dividing the overall sum that they get by how many ever employees they get and distributing it equally that way. Not all of them are doing it that way, but some of them are. And they're giving it as of July 1st. So everyone, every elected who isn't following our policy is giving it as of July 1st and distributing the sum that they've given, but the sum is always calculated on hire date when the budget is given. So at the end, when the budget is approved, Michelle sends out a spreadsheet that says this is, you know, this is what each employee is entitled to at 2%, and this is the overall amount of money that you have, if that makes sense.
So Stephanie, so this all from the fact that certain county employees were not getting merit increases when they thought they were versus in other departments, they were getting it? Because of how elected officials?
No, so even, so there's, there are two separate issues going on. The first the issue with, with the pay that has been requested retroactive to hire date, because that's what the policy says, and that's that is separate. Their county, the county commission follows that policy, even though we might put the raise in late, they're still getting it back to their hire date. And then there are some elected officials who do not use hire date. They just use the overall sum that they're provided, and on July 1, they provide whatever raise to their employees, dividing that sum as they see fit on July 1. And they're not waiting for hire date. So in that instance, an employee actually will end up making less. If they wait for their hire dates, they get, they might get it later, but they'll get 2%, so their salary would increase more with that 2%. But if they do it on July 1st, there's less money to go around because they're not doing it on hire date. So that, I think there are two issues. One, electeds who just decide to do it on July 1 and, and split the money up. And then the other issue is something that we'll probably have to go into executive session about because it's a legal issue. But the county commission, even if we're putting it in late, we're still following that, like it the hire date that's in the policy and that's in the approved budget. So there's no county commission department that isn't using hire date. It's only the elected officials who are not using hire date, and it's not all of them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
It's an issue.
It is an issue, and it's going to become a bigger issue as these salaries continue to, as we continue to see a discrepancy in the kind of work that is done in each office and the salaries that are provided to each of those employees. It became an issue back in the mid 2000s. I, it was like 2006 maybe, and then I think in maybe 2007 or 2008 is when we did the Jacob study because of that problem. And I was very much right in the dead center of all that. So I remember it. It's, it's not, it's I, I don't think it's appropriate. You know, and it's going to make everything off balance. That's what happened before.
Well, and it seems to me that in the end, some of the employees lose out because their actual salary does not increase the full 2%, even though it's, it's divided between everyone, but if your salary increase is 2% every year, you're going to gain more than having it divided with everybody else.
Right.
Go ahead.
Well, I, and as Patsy said, you know, we had some clerks and some departments were making so much money, and then, you know, there were huge discrepancies in other departments with basically the same job description. So that's, it's really, if we could get everybody on the same page on this, and I know we don't have the legal authority to do that, it would be better for everyone in the long run.
Right. Well, I talked to the circuit clerk and she had, so the first year we did it, she didn't do it on hire date, but I think this year she is going to, she's going to start doing it on hire date. And I, I know that some of the employees didn't understand, especially if they had to wait for their raise till their hire date, but it increases your salary more. You know, that first year, yeah, you have to wait, but then, you know, you're getting, instead of half a percent, you might be getting, you're getting 2% if you're, you know, based on your merit, and most employees do get the 2%. So, yeah, I mean, it it, so I was able to to speak with her, and I think she did decide that she would use that system this year, as far as I know. I don't think she's changed her mind on that. So I have been able to bring over one elected official to using the, the county policy, so.
Well, so I guess, so I guess all of that can be considered in next year's budget.
Yes.
Since, so I guess we'll have to keep an eye open for, for those thing, well, not we, you, whoever's here will have to keep an eye open for those things and and it may impact next year's, next year's budget for those salary line items.
Besides the, the funding crunch.
Exactly.
Right. And some of, some of the raises that are provided, like when higher earning employees are leaving, some of those are promotions, but not all of them have been. I mean, I think some of them, they seem to be, it's not an employee who's been promoted to a higher position. It's just that they, they got a, you know, an increase when an employee left, but some of them have been promotions where an employee is taking over that position, but not all of them. So, and then the, the other thing is on Nathan, that's the other issue, which is retroactive payments that were requested in conformance with the policy. There's an attorney general's opinion on it, but I think that is probably a discussion better had an executive session.
Okay, so we're back to Nathan's list. Is that correct, my understanding? Mr. Nathan, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay. What can we do in public session?
I'm just going to trim my list way down and here is, here are the things, and I think that we would, I would recommend that we go into executive session on all of these items because I am either providing you with legal advice or in some cases, especially related to the employee compensation issue, the very last matter. There may be liability issues, but these would be the issues I would recommend we go into executive session over. The third one down, discussion of Jefferson County Circuit Court Civil Action 19P 69. Way down my list, discussion of Jefferson County Circuit Court Civil Action 20C 20. And then the last two items, discussion legal issues regarding the proposed solar text amendment, including bonding and related matters. We've pretty much beaten that one to death, but I would say that there could potentially be some liability question issues that you might have, and I would address those if you had them in executive session, but I doubt that we do much with that. And then the last one, discussion of issues regarding implementation of compensation standards for certain employees under compensation policy to afford and associated policies. And that one is potential liability issue for the county.
Okay. I'll move, we go into executive session to receive legal counsel on four different items that are listed under number 12. Jefferson County Circuit Court Civil Action 19 dash P dash 69. Jefferson County Circuit Courts Civil Action Number 20 dash C dash 20. Discussion of legal issues regarding proposed solar text amendment, including bonding and related matters. And then lastly, discussion of issues regarding implementation of compensation standards for certain employees under compensation policy to afford and associated policies. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, the motion is before us to go into executive session, receive legal counsel on four matters. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So now we get off of this and go to our other thing? I guess. We actually leave this meeting and go?
Yes, you have to, you have to leave this meeting and go on to the go to meeting site.
Okay.
Sorry.
Then come, right?
...
Pass my bedtime.
Okay, yeah.
My husband just texted me and asked me if I was okay. And I said, yeah, I'm okay.
We have everybody on and we live? Maybe I'm not.
I don't see you, Jane, but I hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, I have John.
No one can see. All right.
Yeah, I have every, I, we have all the commissioners.
Okay. Yeah, I just have to click that each time it seems like. Okay. I move we come out of executive session and return to open session.
Second.
Questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is unanimous. Okay, we are now back in open session. Commissioner Lawrence Eddie, were you saying something or? Okay, I thought I heard him.
Well, I was trying to remember everything Nathan said. Yeah, I was going to start, but then I said I.
Well. I'll make the motion that we authorize based upon the discussions and executive session that we.
Ralph, you're breaking up a little bit. Ralph, can you hear us?
Yeah.
I think.
We might have lost Ralph.
I didn't hear Patsy was making.
Yes, she was going to.
Well, I started to, but then I stopped when I heard you. So either you can do it, I can do it. I don't care.
Anybody, please.
All right, I move, I'll make motion based upon the discussions that we held that were held during the executive session. I move that we direct Nathan to draft an opinion letter and send it to the county clerk and the attorney. And I can't remember who else. Is that it?
To us.
And to us.
To us.
Okay, all right, that's, that's a motion. Jane, you're, you're muted.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, all right, we're already, okay. The motion before us is for Nathan to draft an opinion letter be sent to the clerk and the commission. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion covers. Okay, carries, it's unanimous. Is there any other business? Any that counted for us?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Third, fourth, and fifth. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, it's unanimous. We adjourn. All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Yeah.